Cindy Martinez, this is the first time meeting you, so good to meet you.
Rebecca Wontz, April Martinez.
Thank you for coming and helping us out.
You're welcome. Okay, well, thanks for having me out, and so we're gonna do a little board training. We're gonna do evaluating and improving student outcomes. This is the, I've updated it, it was supposed to be the 2022 version, but they've changed the accountability system up, so we've updated the slides in there some. You're required, I think this start, this is like the third iteration of this training, so you're required to do this training every two years. And so the good thing about it is, is when we have the whole, the whole board here and we go through this training, we also get credit for team of eight training. So we'll get six hours worth of credit when we leave, when we leave tonight, which is, was good. So you can say that now, I'll say the positive now. When we get into this accountability system, it really gets into the weeds pretty, pretty good. I always say when we get, start getting into that, probably, I hadn't been doing this training very long, and I went out to Spur, and the board president had been on the board for 25-plus years. And I'd said the same thing about we get six hours worth of credit, and we finished the training that night, and he looked at me, he said, "Well, Wayne, I feel like we got six hours of training," even though we were there, over there, the moment too. So we'll be, we'll be around two and a half hours tonight, because we've got a couple other things in here, but, but we'll get six hours worth of credit, so that'll be a good thing. So first thing up is just the, so this, this shows you all of the required training that you're supposed to get as a board member. For those of you that don't know me, I was the superintendent at Sands for 11 years prior to going to Loma. So spent lots of time in Loma Sosa, tons and tons at Petrosas, because if we wanted to leave that, we had to come to either Loma Sosa or Big Spring, and so I spent a lot of time here. But when I started as a superintendent, I think a, a brand-new board member might have had to have 10 or 11 hours of board training, and an experienced board member had to have about five or six, depending on whether it was a legislative year or not. And now, it, it's up over 20 hours for a new board member of required training. And so every time the legislature meets, they normally, well, the last several years, every time they've met, they've added board training. I think we escaped the session this year, not gonna worry, they don't do something in a special session, but I think we escaped with adding any more board training after this session, so, so that, that's one positive coming out of that. But that, that's just a list of it that you go through there, and, and so, all the, all the different things that you have to have. And so the evaluating, improving student outcomes, and a team of eight, those are the two that we're gonna get here. David had talked to me earlier about maybe doing, hey, trying to get into Lone Star Governance Training, I do that training as well. That's a two-day, eight-hour-a-day training, and, and I get in trouble with people out early, so it, it's a, it's a long, intense training, but you get credit for every, all, if you were to go through that, you get all the hours that you have to have for the year of taking care of in that, in that one year. So it is, it is a way to do that, it's a way to kind of grow as a board, and really talk about that down the road. But if not, then you just, you have that, and then the rest of the things that you have to get throughout the year. So when, when we very first started doing this training, it, like I said, it digs heavy into the accountability system, and they didn't trust me to get up and talk to you guys, so they, they took our accountability experts from the service center and let them do the training, because in order to do this training, you had to sit through a training and then take a test to be able to do it, and our accountability folks could pass the test without sitting through the training, so we let them do it, and I just went with them and watched all the different board meetings. And early on, they led a lot of people, like, we brought probably, I don't know, 15 or 20 boards to the service center and did it all in one night. But one of the things that they, now they won't let us do that anymore, but, but one of the things that, that they said that night, or one of the nights that we were working with two or three boards, they finished the training, and the board president looked at, at, at the presenter and said, "So why are you teaching all this?" That's why we pay him, and pointed towards the superintendent. And I guess TA heard that over and over and over again, because they actually added a slide, and TA added it, not me. But it says, "As, as a, as a board, you're, you're, you're tasked with the oversight of academic achievement." And so if you're gonna be tasked with the oversight of academic achievement, they feel like you should have some basic understanding of what's actually in the accountability system. So we're probably gonna get way further into the, to the weeds. I try to keep it up at a 10,000 or 15,000-foot level, but, but TA just keeps dragging us back down into it some, so, so we'll go from there. So the objectives tonight, we'll go through those, we're gonna discuss the school board behavior specifically that are correlated with improved student outcomes, we're gonna review the state accountability system, and now in these latest iterations of, of the ISO training, they're starting to add different student groups. So there's student groups in the accountability system, and they're starting to, to focus on two. And so tonight, we'll, we'll focus on students with disabilities and the emergent bilingual students, and we'll spend just a little bit of time at the very end talking about those two student groups. So the commissioner put this, this up on, when he very first got to TA, it was something they wrote on the whiteboard and it's still there, and they, they still talk about it a lot, that student outcomes do not change until adult behaviors change. And so they truly believe that. Let me ask you this, if, if you're gonna, and we're not talking about necessarily school, any type of adult behavior change, if you're gonna get true adult behavior change, what's the key drivers in that, in that happening?
If you're gonna get, say that again, I'm sorry.
What, what are the drivers that makes an adult change behavior? That's maybe a better way to say it.
They're gonna have to want to.
Okay, so want to is a big piece of that, right? All right, so that's the big piece, and, and we're gonna agree with you. So they're gonna say that, and not just TA, it's, it's been studied in multiple, multiple research studies, if you're gonna have true adult behavior change, you have to have some knowledge, you have to have some skills, but the biggest piece of it is mindset. And so I, I'll, I'll put it back on me, I've struggled with weight all my life, so it's up a little bit, and I was talking to David about, I've been trying to drink 100 ounces of water since June 1st, so we may have to take a break, so I can go to the bathroom a little bit. But, but even if I'm just, if, if, when I'm trying to lose weight, and I'm, and I'm, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do, you, you need to have a little bit of knowledge, right? It's math problem. I need to take in less calories than I expand. If, if I don't, I'm not gonna lose weight, it truly is just a math problem. You might need some skills, so I might need some, some skills and ways to cook food a little differently, or prepare food a little differently, I might need some skills and ways to work out a little differently, so that I burn calories more efficiently, or I can burn a bigger number of calories in a smaller period of time, those skills help. But all the knowledge and skills in the world, if my mind's not made up, it doesn't happen, right?
Willpower.
So then I don't get up at 7:00 in the morning, or 5:00 in the morning and go to the gym, or I don't drink the 100 ounces of water, or I eat the cheesecake or whatever it was that I saw back there a while ago. You know, so all of those things that happen, if my mind's not set, then, then it's not gonna happen, all right? And so it's the same with any adult behavior change, that mindset is the biggest piece of that. It's probably 70 or 80% of it. So we're gonna talk about, so what, what then, when we very first started doing this training, I would ask, okay, if, if student outcomes aren't gonna change until adult behaviors do, we would ask, what group of, of adults had to change first? All right, and, and most of the time, I would hear parents. And I wouldn't argue with that one at all, except for we don't have any control over parents, right? And, and it's a board training, so I would give them a hint and say, "Hey, it's, it's a board training," so they would say, "Okay, well, the school board's behavior needs to change first." But, but in that process of that, we're gonna look at what, 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 what board behaviors can actually influence that, all right, can affect those student outcomes. And so we're gonna look through that tonight. The first one of those is gonna be synergy and teamwork, all right? So the board and the superintendent have to have collaboration, they have to be able to work together. You don't have to like each other, but you have to work together. So each, even as board members, you may not like each other, that's fine, I don't really care, as long as we can sit in a room and work together to, to get, to, to get a better solution, right? And the same with that, with the board, as you're, the board's job of oversight and the superintendent's job, that has to be collaborative, and if it's not, it's not a collaborative process, then we're not going to be successful. Now, I, I've had, you know, they've got research, the commissioner is a data guy, so he doesn't put hardly anything out or talk unless, unless he's got tons and tons and tons of data behind you. And so he truly, he truly is a data person. And the research has been out for years and years and years, that says a teacher has the, the biggest chance to make an impact on any individual student, all right? It's just there. And if you go back to when you were in school, you're gonna remember a teacher that had a big impact on you. And sometimes that impact is positive, and sometimes that impact is negative, but you're gonna remember, you're gonna remember both of those, right? The ones in the middle, you're gonna not remember as much, but you're gonna remember those two. And, and they have the biggest, they have the biggest chance to make an impact, all right? We also have research for probably 20 or 30 years that have said, you can have a high-performing campus, and you can take a mediocre principal and put it on that campus, and if the principal doesn't change their behavior pretty quickly, then the campus will falter. It, it will sink to wherever the principal's at. And that data has been proven over and over again. If, you have, you, you need good leadership on that, in that point. So what TA's been trying to do is, they've been trying to study what, how can the superintendent and the board, how can this team of eight make an impact on, on district and student outcomes? And so they've studied through the Lone Star, the Lone Star Governance Training, they've used that, that's a pretty limited, limited set of data over a shorter period of time, and if it's gonna be truly data that we would quote and try to publish, we need a bigger sample of it, and we need it for a longer period of time. But what, in their limited side, what they did was, is they found that the school boards that got into Lone Star Governance and truly implemented it, the way it's supposed to be implemented, which is a long, grueling task, I mean, it's not easy, their letter grades of their district normally rise about a letter grade, go up a grade. What they found also, though, is the converse of that, those districts that started the Lone Star Governance Training and did it for a month or two, and then said, "This is too hard, and we don't believe this, and we quit," they're, they don't, they don't just stay the same, they actually go down a letter grade. So, so then I was like, "Well, the theory to that is, then don't do it, and we should get a commitment to it," right? So, and I'm not saying, and I'm not here to advertise for Lone Star Governance, that's not what I'm trying to do. We're just, we need to look at what those behaviors do. And so the first thing is, we have to have board superintendent collaboration. So you guys got a, a brand-new superintendent, first-time superintendent. So what does board and superintendent collaboration really mean? How does that process work? Because he's, there're gonna be things that he doesn't know, because he, having been in that job for 11 years, until you've been in it, you just don't know. You, you don't know what you don't know, and even after you've sat in it 11 years, you still find things that you don't know, okay? So, so we're gonna go through that, so we're, we're gonna talk about that a little bit, too. The, if you're looking at, if you're looking at, at the job of the board, it's really to oversee the management of the district, right? So that's kind of like what Jerry Jones should do when he's overseeing the Cowboys, right? He, he should oversee the big piece of that, so it's like, what can we learn from there? So we'll come back and revisit that one in a minute. So the school board authority talks about, the, the board, as a board member, you don't have any individual power unless you're in a meeting and you're working body corporate, okay? And so the power is when the seven of you are in, in, well, when four of you are gathered together in a legally-called meeting, all right? That, that's where the power is at. We have to have at least four in a legally-called meeting, and, and then, and then you have that. But, and the act can, the, the board can only act on a majority vote of the members present. So, you know, the oversight role, I've already talked about that, you oversee the management of the district and ensure the superintendent implements and monitors plans, all right? Those are responsibilities of, of the board. So the governing role, the board should adopt a vision statement, we'll, we'll come back to that when it's in that other, that other piece of that. Establish performance goals for the district. So then we can kind of look at this time clock. So we're gonna kind of just, at the end of the day, we're gonna draw a line through this clock right here, and the top half of that is gonna be things that the board is responsible for, and the bottom half is the things that the superintendent and administration are responsible for. So the board's supposed to adopt vision and goals, and I'll, when we get to that in a minute later, I think that's one of the most important things that you do. And I want to underline that, because a lot of times, that's not a, it's not a sexy process. It, it's, it's hard to really, to, to sit down and write some of that. When I was the superintendent at Sands, those guys would have rather had their teeth pulled than sit down and try to write a, a vision statement or a goal statement, that they wanted me to do that. But, but it really works better when, when you guys do that. So, once you adopt policies, then it's the administration's job to develop plans and regulations around those policies, all right? And then it's their job to implement the operations, it's their job to evaluate progress, and then it's the board's job then to come back and evaluate outcomes, okay? That, that is a role in oversight, we're gonna evaluate, how did we do at the end of the season, all right? Just like if, if Jerry Jones, unfortunately, in NFL and a lot of these, a lot of these, these things now, they try coaches in the middle of the year, but you don't, you really shouldn't be doing that until you see the whole process through, right? And we want to evaluate the outcome, the total outcome. So, so we've got that, the top part's board authority, and the bottom half is superintendent authority. So governance and management. So that's just another way to say the same things. So the various roles, what can we learn from Jerry Jones then, all right? So when, when Jerry's sitting down there just encouraging and clapping his hands, hey, that's a checkmark, that's something he should be doing, all right? If he's sitting up in the press box and he's just overseeing, right, monitoring the outcomes, that, that's a good thing. When he gets down on the sideline and starts trying to call plays, that's an X, right? And, and so that's not, that's not, that shouldn't be his role. Now, as an owner, you can probably do what you want to do, but just because you can do it, the question is, should you be, should you do it? All right? And I think sometimes as a board, you need to think about that, too. Just because we can do this, should we do this? All right, and, and that's an, an important thing to think through. All right, so you get a whole lot of misconceptions, too. Until you've been on the board, you may, the same way, you may not know what you don't know. But once you get on the board, and you've kind of figured out how things really work, that's maybe a whole lot different than what it was when you signed up to run, okay? And so as a board member, these are misconceptions, as a board member, my neighbor thinks I should do, I get to do this, right? But in reality, I only get to do this. If, if my, if my neighbor really knew how everything's worked, and sometimes that's not just neighbors, a lot of times, that's family. One of the, one of the, I actually was a super, I wasn't superintendent, I was actually the principal at Sands, but one of the things, I gained a lot of respect for the person, but I often wondered how it went, went on at home. His wife got a petition started inside the town to fire the girls' basketball coach, and they got quite a few signatures on the, on the petition, and she brought it to a board meeting, and the board voted 7-0 that night to keep the, the basketball coach. And then I, I don't know how it went when they got home that night, it's still married, everything's good, so, but, but when you act as a, as a board, that may not be in the same interest or may not be the, the, and the reason for that was, was they didn't have the recommendation from the superintendent, they didn't, hadn't been building a case to fire this person, so they couldn't, they couldn't go vote that way that night. And, and, you know, did, did his wife understand really all of that? So there's just, there's, there's things like that that happen. Your neighbors and your family sometimes are gonna think that, that just because you're a board member, you should be able to do this, and, and in reality, you don't have that authority. So six ways to handle a decision, all right? So the first one is, the board makes the decision and accepts responsibility for it. The board will usually expect a recommendation, maybe some information from the superintendent, but, but it's the board's, it's, it's statutorily the board's job. So examples of that, policy and budget decisions, right? It's the, it's the board's job to adopt a budget, it's the board's job to adapt the tax rate, it's the superintendent's job or the administration's job to bring you a recommendation on that budget, but it's the board's job to actually adopt it, okay? Policy decisions, sometimes we're gonna bring TASB almost every, well, we'll see if that still happens after, after some of the legislative session, but most of the schools in the state of Texas use TA, TASB to write board policy, right? So they're gonna send you that recommendation, and some of those you don't really have much choice in, and then sometimes they say, "Okay, well, here's option A, B, and C, but we have policies for whichever one of those ways you want to go." As a board, you need to do that. Now, you may ask the, the administration, "Hey, what do you think about this? How hard is this gonna be to implement? How hard is this gonna be to enforce?" But ultimately, it's the board's responsibility to either adopt the policy or not. The second way then is, the school board and administration should attempt to reach a consensus, and both parties should accept the responsibility for the outcome, all right? So the, the example of that's district goals and strategic planning. You're gonna be required in statute to, to statute, to, to set performance goals for third-grade reading, third-grade math, we'll talk about that in a little bit, all right? If, if you've just been sitting on the board and you haven't been digging in the data, do you really know where that goal should be set at? No, you're gonna need some, you're gonna need some information from the administration and his team to tell you what, what's realistic, all right? But at the end of the day, if you want to turn the heat up a little bit and make that a little tougher, you have the ability to do that. But if we're working collaborative and we're working together, and we get to consensus of what, what we think is that, what, what is an acceptable goal? How much, how hard should we push versus what's achievable? Because if we set a goal up here, and we're here, and there's no way we're gonna make that in a year, then you, you set the district up for February. So you need to work together and try to figure, figure those things out. The third, the third way is, the school board's legally required to make the decision, however, the board should strongly consider the judgment of the administration, who will be held accountable. So that one, you know, an example of that one's hiring certain staff, okay? Unfortunately, probably not one of my, 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 the board member and I are still good friends, played golf together today, but, but he and I locked horns one night, because he wanted me to hire a person. And I had gone through a site-based decision-making committee, and, and my principal was gonna, my, my principal on that team had decided that this was the best person. And so we argued behind closed doors and in closed session for probably two hours about whether we were gonna hire that, the person that I had presented to him. And then finally, I just said, "Look, I'm tired of explaining to you what, what we've done, come out and vote them up or down." But my job as administration is to bring you a recommendation, your job as a board is to vote them up and down, just know that there's gonna be four more names before we get to the one you want. Because that's the way the, the, the team that's gonna be held accountable for the results, that's what they think is best. I don't know what's best, they're in the data, they, they're in, they're in it, they know who's gonna fit, though, they understand what they need as a, as a, as a group. And so that came out that night, we came out, and they voted 7-0 to hire the person that, that we just put off. But, and I'm not saying that the board should be able to stand, I think you should hold the administration's feet to the fire and ask hard questions. But at the end of the day, at some point in time, if, 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 if the site-based team says this is the person we want, and you make them go with a different person, and then they don't get the results that, that, that you expect, you're gonna hold them accountable for a decision you made. And so as, as a board, you're gonna, you, they, they need to have some kind of that input, even though in most places, hiring professional staff is the board, is, is in the board's place. Now, in some school districts, they, they just delegate that to the superintendents. And a lot of school districts in the summer delegate that, that authority to the superintendent in the summer, so that we don't, because as I was talking to David right now, we're in a shortage right now, we can't find enough teachers. So when we find one, we want to be able to sign them on the dotted line, we don't want to have to wait 72 hours to get a board meeting, and then somebody else stolen away because they delegated that authority away. So there, there's things in that, that play with that, all right? So then the fourth way, it's the administration's decision, makes the decision, but it would be wise to listen to the board before the decision is made. So the example there is gonna be some kind of controversial topic, or plans for a principal hire, key district hires, athletic director hire, people that are gonna be highly visible inside the district, right? It, it's ultimately their decision, but when they bring that to you, if you know that there's something out there that's gonna cause, that could cause problems inside the community, it's your job to protect him and make sure he knows, "Hey, if you do this, this is how it's gonna be perceived. Are you, will, are you, are you good with that perception? Are you good with the heat that's gonna come with that decision?" And as a board, you guys know this community better than, than I ever knew Sands, and better than he's probably gonna know Loma Sosa, because you've lived in it most of the time, most of your life, and, and you were elected, so you have the, you have the people's trust, all right? The fifth way is, the board makes the decision, but informs the board after the decision is made. So, and we put it in that kindergarten, it's like surprises, but board members don't, and that, that goes both ways, superintendents don't like surprises either. So, but, but we know, there's gonna be times where we just have to make a call, all right? We, we have to make a decision, we have to move on with it, we don't have time to go, we don't have 72 hours to get a board meeting together, but we don't want you to get out into the community and be, and be, be hit with questions about what happened and you not know. So in those types of cases, we're gonna make the decision, but then we need to get on the phone and call all seven of you and tell you, or, or text all seven of you and let you know, and say, "Hey, if you have individual questions, call me and we'll, and we'll discuss it." But, but there are times where that has to happen. And then the last one is, there are routine decisions, and, and we're not gonna bother the board with that information, because it's, as a board, you need to be setting up oversight, managing that, overseeing the outcomes, right? The, the results. But those little routine, daily things about, well, you know, so-and-so teacher wasn't here, so we put this, wasn't here today, so we put this substitute in there, that's not information you need to know, right? Who subbed in what room today? All right, so there's gonna be some times where we have to do things that, that aren't gonna be called for that. Minor purchases, they, they request approval, so maybe your system goes through where he has to approve the leave for somebody to be gone. You guys don't need to know that, "Hey, so-and-so took a day of vacation today." Those aren't things that the board should be, should be concerned about. And we put minor purchases there, so every district in your board policy has a threshold of what, what they can spend without board, without board approval, and, and as long as they're spending inside the budget line, or inside the function, and it's under that, that amount, then they have that, that ability to do that, okay? But if it's gonna be something, if it's gonna be something that's gonna be high visibility, we might want to move that back up into one of those other decisions, right? We might be up in the fourth decision, it's like, "Hey, this really doesn't cost a lot of money, this doesn't cost much, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna have an impact in the community." When you see those types of things, you might, you might need to move it up, all right? So, so here's the scenario, we gotta cancel school because of weather. Unfortunately, we're doing that more and more these days. Which one of those six do you guys think that is? One, two, three, four, five, or six?
Five or six.
Five or six.
Five or six, yeah.
Anybody?
We're probably gonna learn to that.
You might learn it about the same time everybody else does, because by the time he gets the social media alerts out, you're probably gonna see it, and you're gonna know what he did, so.
Six.
So, so let me change that, let me change that scenario a little bit. We're gonna close school down for a week.
Oh, yeah, that's not too bad.
Yeah, that, that doesn't need to be six there anymore, right? That elevates that girl.
Well, we were brought into it earlier this year, once we had so many because of weather, that we started talking.
Well, ours is just Texas, what do y'all think? I mean, I think it's a good idea, that's what happened. No, well, that's what happened this, this year.
I just want to know who makes that decision, not about the soup.
Yeah, it's gonna be the soup's deal, but where, but, but should he get, you know, when should he, when should he get it? We haven't had, we haven't been out all year long, the first big snowstorm hits, eight schools around you canceled.
Six.
He's gonna cancel.
Six.
Yeah, so that, that should be a six. We got major, major, they hit major water main, and it's gonna take them a week to fix it, and so we gotta close this campus down for a week? Yeah, you might need some heads up on that before, before you go make that decision and make it public, okay? So then that's probably gonna be five or four, and he may not have a choice, he may have to cancel it, but you guys need to know about it, maybe even before the decision's made, but, but immediately right after if not, so it's gonna move back up to four or five, all right? Approve a teacher's request to attend a curriculum workshop. Yeah, most of the time, you don't care about that, right? What if I said that the workshop was on teaching abstinence in the classroom? Yeah, it changes, right? So none of these decisions are just black and white. And so, and make it worse, we're gonna send that person to Austin to learn and, and spend, they're gonna spend three days at that workshop, and we're gonna spend money on, and then come back and teach abortion or abstinence, or whatever you pick, the hot topic, we'll put it there, all right? Yeah, you guys might want some input into that, right? Because that's gonna, that's gonna affect the district, and you're gonna hear about it if it gets out, right? So then it changes, it changes the lineup there. You see how those things change? Okay, so there, I, I skipped it, I, I forgot what it was, but same thing. Alright, cut a program and staff to avoid using fund balance, um, to, to balance board adopt, uh, to, to balance the adopted budget. Whose decision is that?
You said, oh, cut a program, oh, three, one?
Yeah, if you're gonna cut an entire program, that probably needs to be a collaborative decision, right? The board probably needs to take some responsibility in that. And, and in reality, um, most of the time, the board has the authority to hire and fire, right? So in this kinda case, you're gonna be, if you're going to, um, you're gonna be firing staff, then that's the board's responsibility. But it's not gonna be one, it's gonna be a shared responsibility. You're gonna want that, that thing, so I agree with you. Alright, adopt standards for evaluating progress for achieving student performance goals. Okay, you're required in law to, well, it depends, you're required in law to do it for kindergarten, for third grade and, and reading and math. So if it's that one, which, which responsibility is it?
Two.
Two. Alright, but let's say, um, well, there's student performance goals, so um, standards for evaluating progress for achieving student performance goals. When, when we get into that one, we'll, we'll come back to that one and the other one, but I'm gonna say that, that one probably needs to be a four, alright? So what standards are you gonna use? And we'll have some discussions in that when we get into the actual accountability system. Determine qualifications to be posted when advertising for a new kindergarten teacher. Yeah, it's just administration's job, it's probably six. Now, but we're gonna do that same thing with an, with an A D or a principal. Now where's it at?
Administration.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be four, I think you probably should listen though. We're gonna go hire campus principal. What do you guys, are, are, is there any qualifications you guys think we should have? Are, are there things that you don't want? Cause when you write tho, when you write those postings, you can write that, right? You can say, hey, you have to, um, a doctorate, a doctorate degree is required. Or you could say, a master's degree is required, but, but a doctorate's preferred. I mean, there, there are things there that you, y'all would, he would wanna listen to what you guys think, okay? And, and the, the difference there is, is when we're hiring a kindergarten teacher, we're posting for a kindergarten teacher versus a, a, a principal, the, the spec, you're gonna draw a whole lot more attention, alright? The majority of the community, if they read the newspaper, you hired so-and-so to be a kindergarten teacher, if you don't have a kid in that kindergarten teacher's class, they probably don't care. You hire somebody to be a principal, you're gonna, it grows, alright? And so, so then as it grows, we get back up into where it's either gonna be three or four, two, three, four or five, alright? The one and six are the, are the, are the outside ends of that.
So even if you give your superintendent full power to hire or fire, if you need a principal, would you still have your board listen?
I would've wanted to, I, I would've wanted to know, we're, we're gonna give him the, the authority to do that, but I would want, I would want him to, when we're posting it, for you, to get input from y'all before we get it posted. Now, once, once you give him the authority to hire the person, if you've given him that authority, he would do that. I don't think even in Lubbock, they'd do that at a principal level. They'd do it at a, at a teacher level, but they wouldn't do it at a principal level.
Gotcha.
And, and so like if you're at Sands, they're probably not gonna give you the, the authority even at the teacher level. Now, some of those have started changing because of the teacher shortage, but prior to the teacher shortage, that wouldn't have happened in years past. But now, now that the teacher shortage is getting, has gotten there, they've done that for the hiring period over summer where we need to get somebody signed on a dotted line and we don't wanna wait seventy-two hours to get, to get a, to see if I can find four of you to come hire them, because I, I had to do that. I mean, there was lots of times where we, okay, these are the two people we want, and then I started calling to see if I could get four people there and we got it posted for seventy-two hours later and they may have come up at eight o'clock in the morning and I made one motion, or I had one, one agenda on the item and they hired the staff that I came and then they, they, they adjourned. But those are the types of things that you have to jump through if you don't give him that authority, but a principal's a big hire, so I, I.
But you said during the hiring, the hiring period, but so what does that mean that they have it just for that or is it all year round?
It's both, so like Lubbock ISD, um, the superintendent has the authority to hire throughout the year. Big school district, they have people come and go all the time. You don't wanna, that, they already get a lot of special meetings anyway, they don't wanna call somebody, they don't wanna call a meeting just to go hire somebody, so they delegate that authority. And when it's gonna be a principal, that's a bigger decision and most of the time, you're not gonna get into a race for, for the principal, right? And so they're gonna, the principal's gonna pick that school because they think you're the best school and so you, you can wait and get, either get it into your normal, your normal board meeting or you call a special board meeting if you're afraid. And some of that, then depends upon where we're at, you know? If, if we're July fifteenth and we start to hire a principal, then we may be calling a special meeting to get him hired. If, if it's April fifteenth and, and we're trying to hire one for the next year, we just may wait till the regular board meeting, okay? So it, it's very dependent then, there's not, there's not hard and fast rules. Custodial services. How, how often, in Lubbock ISD, that's gonna change daily, alright? There, there's gonna be somebody leaving, somebody coming in all the time, so obviously not, but even at Sands, anybody that was an at-will employee, I had authority to hire and fire. The board had authority for the, for the professional staff. And then the, you also have to be very careful with that, especially when you get into smaller communities, because the nepotism then follows who has the hiring authority. So if, if, if the superintendent has that ability, then the nepotism follows the superintendent. If, if, um, the board has that ability, then the nepotism follows the board. So, so things that come through there. Evaluate performance and recommend reemployment of a first-year teacher. Whose job is that?
Administration.
That's administration's job, alright? And he's gonna, um, and that particular year, he's gonna do it, but then whose job is it to actually then, um, well, let's just go back and say that he, he recommended to fire that person, right? The board then has that responsibility to take that recommendation or not, alright? Had two-level grievance, uh, three-level grievance hearings involving first-year teachers, which one is that one? That's a board. Alright? I think you guys got the, got the gist of that, we're not gonna spend any more time on that one. Yeah, adopt the goals, we're gonna talk about that again. Determine how, how money's budgeted for instructional supplies is allocated to campus.
Administration.
That's administration's job. So as a board, you, you, you approve the budget and you're gonna approve a, a function eleven, which is gonna include, is gonna be all the instructional, and that's gonna have a supply line in there, but really, in reality, you're not approving down to what that supply line is, you're approving on that function level and then how the administration delegates that, that's how that works. Ask voters for a tax increase to build new schools. Whose job is that? The board has to call the election. Okay, um, we're gonna get out of that one. Sorry, we're gonna jump all the way through that. So we've gotten through that one. Alright, so now we get back to this one, so that talks a lot about how do you guys work together, alright? I guess kind of the, it's a good diagram and guidelines of how, how y'all should work together and how, you can't just draw a line and say this is always the superintendent's job or this is always the, the board's job, because when a little few of those key factors changed, all you had to do was change one word in some of those and it changed where, where we do that, right? So it, it's not hard and fast, it has to be a collaborative effort. And, and you're gonna go through times, um, you've got some new board members in here, you've got a new superintendent, um, you're gonna go through some times where those lines might get blurred a little bit, right? Because, and, and then you're gonna have to go back, you, you have to be self-reflective of yourself, alright? And so you always have to go back and be self-reflective of, am I following what's really right? Is that really, is that really my role? Okay, and, and you're gonna know yourself better, but there, there was times where as a superintendent, I probably crossed that line, just because I felt like I was in a hurry and I wasn't really thinking through it and I did something and it wasn't right, and there was times when my board members did the same thing, alright? They were passionate about one, one particular item or something and they got across that line. And so I tell new superintendents all the time that it, it's not a matter of if a board member crosses that line, it's win. Cause all of them, even my best board members are at some point in time probably gonna do that. Some will be more overt in how they do it, some may not be as overt, but they're all gonna do it at some point in time. And so your job then is to figure out how you keep this, make this relationship work. This relationship has to be good. If, if this relationship is not good, you may have great campuses and those campuses will survive, just like the teacher, the campus will survive a little while with a bad principal, right? When this relationship's not good, it will eventually filter down and hurt the, the actual individual campuses. It will have an impact. So this has to be a good relationship. And, and like I said, this doesn't mean you have to like each other, it just means that you have to work with each other. Alright, so then as a, as a, as a board, your, your biggest, what I think is your, I think these two right here are, it's hard to say, but these two are probably the most important to me. I think that's your job as a board, alright? I think the third one just kinda comes as, as natural, but I think one and two boards don't do enough of that, don't spend enough time thinking about it. But, so the first one is to set the vision and goals, alright? You're required by law to set student outcome goals for third grade reading and math, alright? But it's important for you just, for this board to decide what direction are we gonna go, what is it that we want to be, alright? And you have to go through that process as a team, because Melissa's idea of where we need to be as a district might not be the same as Ron's, alright? But we have to as a team get, get together and get a mission and a vision or goals of where we want to be, and you have to set that, alright? And that, that's the board's job to set that. It's legally required in the statute and I think a lot of times it just gets glossed over, uh, because we're so busy, we're so busy in the, in the weeds that we can't see the forest because of the trees, right? We're trimming branches on this tree and we can't see the forest, and so we just gloss over it. But it's extremely important to know where you wanna go and what you is you wanna accomplish. And that really needs to be the board that drives that, alright? And then values, I think this is probably is most, as important, this is as important as this, alright? We're gonna call the values setting the non-negotiables. Now, I'm gonna give you a non-student outcome, um, example of that, it dealt with budget. So when I got to Sands, I had a three hundred thousand dollar fund balance, which was awful. And so I, I, I was, I, I had a boiler and chiller system that were about eighty years old and would've cost a million dollars to fix and I was scared to death, right? Cause what are we gonna do? And we, we weren't a big enough tax base that we could've just gone out and passed the bond to fix that either. And so at the time, I think the total value for the entire, the whole entire district was like eighty-three million dollars. So, uh, it, I, I was worried about those types of things. And then I got this residential treatment center that moved into my district and I didn't know anything about it, so I was a first-year superintendent, didn't know anything about it, I went and talked to five superintendents in, on the summer before that school year started and said, they had residential treatment centers in their district across the state. They all told me unequivocally, you need to hire as many special ed teachers as you can up on the front side, because if you don't, then you'll, you, um, you won't ever be able to spend the money and, and Mr. Testicle know, there's parameters back in there, you had to spend eighty-five, in those days, you had to spend eighty-five percent of every special ed dollar on special ed. And they were like, you'll never be able to spend the money if you don't hire the teachers. So I did. Guess what? Students come to me, they're not special ed students. Now I've hired two special ed teachers that I didn't need. And so at the end of that year, I had to fire those two teachers and I had to let them go, rift them. It cost me a coach, it cost me the whole elementary music program and I cut every budget by ten percent, I cut every extra budget by about twenty percent, all because we made a mistake. Not, I, I acted on what I thought was great information, right? I did my homework. It just didn't play out the way they told me it was gonna play out. And the reason was, is the person that told me he had a, an emergency placement, a residential treatment center, actually heard him, had an emergency placement shelter. And so there's differences in the rules and, and, and because he gave me the wrong terminology, our district made bad decisions, alright? So I'm still the, the mindset of we have to cut. And my, my business manager comes to me, she'd been there forever and a day, she was great, Cheryl Johnson, she, she, she was phenomenal. But she said, hey, we have this budget line in here that says Team Mills. And what that really means is, is every time we take, um, somebody off-site and we're out there in dinnertime, supper time, we feed them before we come home. And back then, that, it was about twenty-five thousand dollars and that's not a lot of money. Today, probably, it would be enough to do it, but back then, it covered that, but that was half a teacher salary and a little more at the time. And, and so I went to the board and said, hey, here's another place that we can cut twenty-five thousand dollars, and Cheryl said, she goes, we don't do this and there's a lot of schools that don't do this. And so I go to the board thinking, hey, Cheryl hit a home run, right? So I go to the board and start talking to him about it. And the board says to me, hey, you take our kids at three o'clock in the afternoon and take them all over the countryside and you don't bring them home until sometimes nine, ten and eleven o'clock at night. We're not, we're gonna feed our kids. And, and then they made it, they, they said one more thing, there's not a McDonald's on the corner in, in Acton, right? There's just not. You, you're, you're gonna feed those kids, you're gonna take care of them. I don't care what else we cut, we're gonna take care of kids, alright? If I was in Lubbock ISD, that would even have been a discussion, they, they would, they wouldn't even have that line, alright? So what's important to one district and one community is gonna be completely different to what's important to another community and that. You guys set that vision and you guys set those non-negotiables, I don't care how bad things get, we're not doing this, alright? And when you guys get that vision set and you get the non-negotiable set, then everything else in between is, is up, is, is at their disposal to try to hit the goals that you want, alright? But you set, this is where we wanna get, these are the goals, and then you set, these are the things that we can't do and we're not going to do, and then everything else in there is, is up to him. Or not just him, but, but his team.
His staff.
Right? And so I think these two are extremely important, alright? You're also required in statute to, to monitor progress and accountability, alright? And we're gonna talk about accountability all night long inside the student outcomes. But this, this happens in everything, right? So you have all these systems and processes in place. So you have a transportation program, you have a, a, a child nutrition program, you probably have security systems, now you're gonna have to put armed guards on every campus, alright? So there's gonna be systems that, that you guys are gonna implement. You need to be monitoring the progress and accountability of all those. You probably get budget reports at the, at every meeting, so that goes through. So if I'm setting in October and I see we've spent eighty-two percent of one budget, um, that's a pretty good indication that we're not gonna make the year and I'm gonna have to go adopt, we're gonna have to go amend that budget, right? Unless that particular budget line was a one-time expenditure and we, and we actually saved fifteen percent of what we thought, and so we, we're gonna come in under, right? You have to monitor that progress and, and accountability where it's at, alright? Because just looking at the stats, don't give you the whole story, you have to know what those stats mean, alright? And so those, that's, that's the job of the board. And then the last part of that is advocacy engagement and, and those are important too. I think there, you guys probably know, there's, there is a little cafe, or at least there was when I, when I was at Sands, I, it's changed owners, but I think it's still there. But they, they opened up for breakfast and lunch and then they closed the grill about two o'clock and they stayed open till about four, four-thirty and the kids went home and then, and then they closed, closed the doors, cause they had little convenience type items. But I could go down there and sit in the, in the, in the cafe in, in the morning and drink my black Coke, cause I didn't drink coffee, and, and I could probably see about seventy percent of the stakeholders. But I could sit down there and talk for two hours to those stakeholders and my board member could walk in there and spend fifteen minutes and accomplish twice what I did. Because you guys are elected, they trusted you, they, they voted for you to go put in that place. So your job with the community is to advocate for the school district and the community. And when you come inside this meeting, your job is to advocate for all students. And all students doesn't mean one particular program or this program or this student or that student, it's what's best for all students. You have that job as a board to advocate for all students. And so that's extremely important when we're doing the advocacy and engagement piece of that. Now they, they, this is the first time they redid the, the standards for board development and they added that word engagement. Engagement's tough, because when I come here, I wanna advocate for what's best for, for students and when I go outside to the community, we made decisions as a board, I'm gonna say... I'm gonna say, um, they're gonna ask me and I'm gonna advocate for the decisions that we made. And then somebody might even call you on the carpet and say, well, I don't think, I, I think I read the paper and you didn't vote for that. So why are you advocating for it? And the answer is, no, I didn't vote for it because I didn't think it was the right thing. But it's the direction our district's headed. And I'm gonna do everything within my power to make this district successful. So I'm gonna back it the best I can. Alright, and so that's what, that's what advocacy sounds like. But how do I engage the community? Alright, and that's gonna be the same way. If I'm in Lubbock ISD, engaging the community is gonna look a whole lot different than if I'm engaging the community in Wimhezo. Which is probably gonna look different than if I'm engaging the community in Wimhezo. Alright, and so you guys have to decide as a board, how, how do we engage the community? How, how do we get that engagement? How, how do we keep people involved? Alright, and so that, that, that's the board's role. So these five things then, in TDA's mind, if you guys as a board are doing those well, it will improve student outcomes. Alright? And those are all, all of these, to do them well, require adult behavior change. Alright, it requires us to do something different than what we've been doing. Alright, which is the whole, the, the whole idea of that, um, you know, the definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over and expect a different result, right? If we want a different result, we have to do things a little differently. But you guys have to decide that. Alright, so time for review. Some of you've probably seen this presentation a couple of times. Um, and I've done it here at least once. So we've got inputs, outputs, and outcomes. I'm gonna read those to you, the definitions. We'll pick on Ernest this one. Ernest, if I, if I'm playing a basketball game, who has the most control of the set of inputs in a basketball game?
Referee.
I did that one a lot too, but, but he has some control. He doesn't have the most control.
The man with the ball.
Okay, so, so they might have the most control when they're at, at that point in time in the game. Who has the most control for the entire game?
Coach.
A coach. Alright, cause as a player, I'm, I might get control when I'm in the game. Coach decides who gets in the game. Okay, coach decides what we practiced all week. Coach decides what offense and defense we're gonna run. So coach has the most control over the set of inputs. Okay? Uh, he can change the input. He can go from man defense to zone defense, right? Cause that's an input. We're changing, we're changing strategies there. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna use this, this instead of that. So the coach has the most control of the set of inputs. Alright, outcomes are pretty easy if we're playing basketball. I've yet to hear the, the pre-game speech, hey, let's go out and lose big, right? That didn't happen. So the outcome's pretty easy if you wanna win. Alright, so, so that one's easy. The outputs are a little harder sometimes. These are the hardest to try to figure out. What's, what's, if we're playing basketball, what's the easiest output to look, to look at and decide whether we're, we're gonna get? Cause an output should be predictive of the outcome. So what's the easiest thing for me to look at to decide, hey, are, are, are we on path to win or not?
Scoreboard.
The scoreboard's the easiest one, right? There are a lot of them out there and coaches, coaches will have all kinds of outputs, right? Cause they may be down at half, but they may be saying, alright, we're gonna get this many shots per game. And then we're gonna hold the other team to this many shots per game. And if we do that at the end of the game, we'll win. So they'd be, they may be measuring those outputs. But the easiest one for us to look at is, is the scoreboard. Alright, simple. So if you go in down 20 points at halftime, that's a pretty good indication that there's something change. You're not gonna, you're not gonna win, right? But we've all watched teams go in down 20 and come back out and win. Okay, so when that happens, some, the inputs change. Alright? That's the only way that happens, is the inputs change. Alright, now that input may be that, uh, you got somebody in foul trouble in the first half and they had it set. And now they get to play the entire second half. Um, the input may be the other team gets somebody hurt and that person can't play anymore. Alright? But some, it, it may be that coach switched from man to, to, to zone. But whatever it is, the inputs changed. If the inputs didn't change, we weren't gonna get the same, the, the outcome that we wanted, but they changed and, and we did. So, um, and we're gonna define the other outcomes and student outcomes real quick. So an other outcome is gonna be, um, well, we're defined student outcomes. Cause, cause I used to say that too. We, um, we would get to there and I would say budget's not a student outcome. And people will argue with me really quickly. And they argued with TDA too, so they just defined it where they couldn't argue with them. So they're gonna define student outcome as something a student knows, has knowledge of, can actually write. Um, or some, a skill that they can perform that they, they've acquired, they've learned. Alright? I learned how to weld. It's a skill. Okay? And so if, if it's not something that a student can knows or is able to show you, then it's another outcome. Alright, budget's important, right? That is another outcome, but it's an extreme important one. If we don't take care of the budget, we don't get to have school. Alright, they will send a monitor and if that doesn't fix it, then they will shut, they will close the school. Alright? So you have to take care of the monitor. That, that's an extremely important outcome. It's just an other outcome. Alright, most of what we're gonna talk today is gonna be student outcome related. Okay? Um, so student outcome goals, student outcomes, describe what a student, oh, I already said that one. Um, it should include a baseline target populated. They want it to be a SMART goal. That's an easy way to say that. Um, and, and I kinda laugh over here because they say it should challenge the organization. Well, that's kind of inherent in the definition of goal, right? I can't, but if I could go out and run an eight-minute mile this morning, I wouldn't set a goal to run a nine-minute mile tomorrow. Alright, I mean, that, that, that's not the definition of a goal. So it's kinda inherent in that one. Um, they're gonna say that it should require adult behavior change. Uh, they're gonna say it should be the superintendent's first priority for resource allocation. Although this is where TNA kinda start getting off, off course a little bit. I think TDA doesn't understand, um, I, I, I just recently did a, a school finance training. And when, when it's all said and done, you really have somewhere between 3% and 7% of your total revenue that you get in is truly discretionary. The rest of it's pretty much in student, uh, at fixed costs, whether it be salary and benefits for teachers and then hard costs of buildings and maintenance and electricity and water and those types of things. So when you get all of that done, most school districts only have somewhere between 3% and 7%. It's truly discretionary. But if we're gonna set a goal, we wanna make sure we put enough resources there to, to have a chance to make it, to, to achieve that goal. And then it needs to be influenceable by the superintendent. So back before when I would say what group of adults needed to change first, I would always hear parents, right? And, and I don't disagree with that, but we don't have control over them. And neither does, does Mr. Ritchie. So you can't set a goal that says, Mr. Ritchie's gonna make parents behave better. Cause he can't control how parents act. Alright, and so.
He might be able to.
But, so we need something that's, that's influenceable. Okay, something that he actually has some influence over. He doesn't control, but he has influence over. Alright, um, you gave them the definition of SMART goals. Uh, uh, you, you guys are smart people. We're not gonna mess with that one. Uh, so goal progress measures. So these are specific plot, graph platable, um, indicators. Um, so they include that baseline target. They're predictive of the goal. They're gonna be influenceable by the superintendent. Um, so in third grade reading and math, you had to set us, that goal that said, okay, if our students were reading on grade level. I, no, it was, okay, some needs masters. Uh, if they were, if they were, if, 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 if our students were meets in 2019, then in 2024, we're gonna have 50% of our students at meets level. Alright? That, that's the way the goal would be set. And then we would set lines all the way along through there that says, okay, well, if that's 20 points over five years, I gotta grow four points each year to see that. So by the end of year 2020, I should be at, at 34 instead of 30. Alright, and so we can plot those points to see if we're making progress or not. That's how that works. Alright, so, um, most of this is based on, we're kinda reviewing a little bit. Um, most of what we're gonna see tonight is based on one of two, two statewide initiatives. The first initiative was the 60 by 30. That's a Texas workforce goal. It's, um, it's economy-driven. And what that says is by 2030, we would have 60% of our, uh, residents in Texas to be educated. And they use the word educated to mean, uh, that they had a post, some type of post-secondary certi- certification or some type of post-secondary degree. Okay, and this was set, I wanna say in 2010, maybe before that. Um, we were making pretty good progress in that. COVID hit, like everything else, and went backwards. The, that, the higher ed coordinator's been arguing and trying to get the, the legislators' attention that we needed to adjust that goal. And they didn't back off on it. Because in, in order for Texas's economy to flourish, we need an, an educated workforce. And so, uh, the goal is there, there. It brings in a whole lot of, um, K-12 and, and higher ed together. Because we used to point the finger a lot. K, higher ed would point to K-12 and say, you're not getting graduates that, that know enough. And K-12 would, would put at it and say, it's because all you care about is your subject instead of, uh, instead of teaching kids. And so you gotta meet them where they're at. And we were just sitting, pointing fingers at each other. And, and so this, this really made the two come together and put stuff quantifiable down on paper, how to, how to get better at that. Um, so now, now you see a lot of the CCMR type, type programs. Um, the other thing that was happening in here, which was another reason to, to do this, was K-12 was, well, K-12 and higher ed, whoever's fault it was, there were a lot of students getting to the college level and then that's, the, the university would say, um, well, you're not ready for English 101 or you're not ready for College Algebra. You're gonna have to go take this remediation class. Well, then that student would borrow money to go take this remediation class that didn't, that didn't even help his degree plan. So it just increased the student debt figure a lot. And so they've worked tons to try to reduce that. So that we're not getting as many graduates with as big a student debt. Um, the second, well, so this, this goes back in here and talks about then, uh, the five-year goals that we, we had to set for that. Um, on the, on the reading, I probably, they do this backwards. I think they should put that slide after this one. But anyway. The, um, so the statewide student outcomes, um, I, I told you that the, the commissioner doesn't do anything without that, right? So when he first got to TDA, um, my, my, I'll tell you how old I am now. My first, my graduating class was the very first class that had to take a test to graduate from high school. Alright, and so if, we were the first one that had to pass the standardized test. Alright? And so we took that our junior year and, and, um, every year since that year, they would, they would give you a test and students would perform here. And then, and then we would get better, we'd get a whole lot better. And then when we got pretty good, they would make the test harder and we dropped down a little bit. And then after a couple of years, we, we rebounded. And that happened through all this series of tests until we got to store. And when we got to store, the school, the reading scores dropped, but they didn't rebound. And so the commissioner went back and did all kinds of research and tried to figure out what, um, what were we doing in Texas when our reading scores were at an all-time high that we weren't doing now that, that would make that better? And the answer was reading academies. That was his answer. Um, now, uh, the reading academies is great training, but if you have spouses or, or friends that have had to take that reading academy, you may have heard all kinds of not nice things about it. Um, and the reason for that is, is, is that when we were doing this a long time ago, the state paid teachers $600 over the summer to go get this training. Well, teachers were like, oh yeah, I'll go do that. Well, the training was really good stuff. And they were getting paid, so they were motivated. They paid attention. They liked it. They came back and, and implemented it in their classrooms and we were getting better as a state. Um, I don't know that you contribute all of it to just those reading academies, but, but the commissioner did. And so, uh, he got it passed back at HP3 that, uh, every teacher was gonna have to go through that reading academy if he taught kindergarten through the third grade. And now I think it's up to fifth graders. Um, this is not my strong suit. Elementary ed is not what I did. I taught calculus, so I, so if you start getting me to talk about reading over here, I'm the last person you want to do that. Um, but, but when I did talk to kindergarten teachers, what you would see in the, in the days when I was a principal and superintendent was that you had one group of teachers that thought, uh, you had to teach phonics and that was the most important thing. If we couldn't get them reading fluently, we could never get them to learn to read. And so phonics was the most important piece. And then you had a whole nother group over here that said, I don't care about the phonics if they don't understand what they're reading, the reading comprehension piece of that. That, that's what's most important. So they focused on the reading comprehension piece instead of the phonics piece. What the reading academies does is it says, look, you can't have one or the other. You have to have both and they have to be interwoven. Unfortunately, there's no curriculum. The curriculums are written for phonics or they're written for reading comprehension. There's not one that does both. So the reading academy tells you to, helps you to go back in and figure out how to alter lessons and, and those types of things to, so that you get those intermediates. Alright, and if you're not doing that, then you're not, the kids aren't gonna be successful. And the part that I can agree with the commissioner is, the data is overwhelming. If kids are not reading on grade level at grade three, if they finish third grade and they're not on grade level, grade three, the rest of their academic career is gonna be tough. There's just not any, the stats are overwhelming. Not saying they can't overcome it. I'm not saying that they won't overcome it. Their, the rest of their academic career is gonna be tough. Alright? And so that, that, that's a key piece. And I, I don't disagree with the commissioner on that one. It's extremely important. If we get them reading on grade three, on grade level, it's much easier to get them to score the rest of the way. Um, the other part with this is, so if you are hearing some stuff, he didn't just leave the reading academies alone. He came in and made it much more difficult to do. And then he mandated that you were gonna do it. And he mandated that you as a board were gonna pay for it. Um, the bill did, but he, he helped get the bill passed. Um, what, that, that you were, you were gonna pay for it. Um, and so, and then he put teeth behind it because he said, okay, after three years, if that teacher doesn't have, um, that reading certification, they can't teach grades kindergarten, K through three. And so he, he put teeth behind it. Um, the effective district framework, um, this is something that's gonna come out. Yama had done some of this, uh, cause you had some schools that were in IR. It's based off the effective schools framework, um, ES, ESF. Um, and so basically what that did was is, is, um, the effective schools framework, districts that were in IR were required to go through it. And it, it was really good training. It was really good exercise for district, for those campuses to do. And what they said was, what they went back and looked at is like, hey, this is such good, this is such a good thing. Even campuses that are being successful or districts that are being successful, might wanna implement this model at the district level. Okay, and so it was, it was supposed to be piloted this year, meaning the 22, 23 school year. Um, there were a few districts that did that. It's really being piloted statewide in the 23, 24 school year. And, and it will be, um, eligible for districts to volunteer in, in the 24, 25 school year. Um, and so that, that's something to go through it. Um, the purpose of EDF, we're gonna skip to some of these sides pretty quick, um, cause I spent time on the first, that other stuff. Um, it's a continuous improvement model. Like I said, it, it, it has a, a very good, strong basis. Uh, they, they, they based it off of that, uh, ESF model. They got lots of, lots of different groups to work through it and help improve it, to refine it. And, and it goes through that. Um, the one thing if you do that as a district, you're gonna, the first thing you're gonna do is a comprehensive needs assessment. And that comprehensive needs assessment will say, alright, one of these five levers is your biggest weakness. Alright, you may have weaknesses in more than one, but they're gonna find the biggest one. And then everything you do for that year or the next year or two are gonna be focused on improving that lever and making it a strength. Uh, and so those are, those are the levers that are gonna go through. And it's continuously been being updated. So my slides are probably a little old because they've, they've worked on it for about six months with, and I haven't, I haven't talked to them. Um, but that comes back out. They're behind in this training. They, they put this out in 22, but they're behind. It's gonna be full-blown implementation in 24, 25. Um, so that gets us back to here. So, um, if, if, if we got the board superintendent working together and we got a vision and goals and we set, um, the, the non-negotiables and then we get progress and accountability, uh, then, um, so inside that monitoring progress and accountability, this is a, a monitoring calendar. So one of the things that you were, when you were required to do the progress, the, the third grade reading and math goal, they are, you're also required to put a monitoring calendar up. Uh, I don't know if that's on the website. A lot of them are in the district improvement plan. I don't know if they're used. Uh, but basically it just says, what month of the year are we gonna look at those progress measures? Um, for third grade reading and third grade math. And CCMR, I forgot that one. That's a 12th grade one. So, um, how, how many of your students are graduating, um, college career, military? So you, you have those three, three goals. And so this just tells us what we're gonna do that. If you have that one on there, this is a lone star governance thing. Um, if, if you're gonna have leadership evaluations, so it says what month we're gonna evaluate superintendent. Um, in reality, if a board's gonna evaluate a superintendent, they should evaluate how they're functioning as a board. And we normally say, ask, we normally say a good thing to do that is about the month prior to you doing the superintendent's evaluation. Um, there are some of these where the superintendents, they'll do, um, they'll do like some check-in. So we check in as a group. How's everything going? We do that quarterly and then we have the, the big summative one. So sometimes that happens. But as a board, you should be having a, a valuation of yourself at least once a year. Um, and then, and then you get a monitoring report. You're required by law once a year to see some type of monitoring report. So this is where we were at in 2019. This is where we're at this year. Are we on track? Are we on not? Um, accountability ratings are gonna come way out. Uh, we, to me, they've, they've, they've made this, um, they've kinda taken the, the wind out of it because they've changed the test. Um, and we're gonna get into those changes here in a minute. And so because they changed the test, it's really hard to say that when they hit that goal that we were talking about in 2019 when they changed, when they changed everything. So, um, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss through that. I'll say, so the next thing is then to actually review the state. So the next thing is then actually review the state accountability system. So it says Texans want an accountability system for public schools. Kevin, you're an auditor. Do Texans really want accountability for public schools? Think that's a true statement?
I don't think so.
Okay, Kevin thinks so? Anybody disagree?
I feel like if this lecture session, the people that run the private schools wants the public schools to be more accountable.
Accountable.
Or they're running.
I get a whole lot of, I, sometimes I get pushed back in this and sometimes I don't. So most of the time when I get pushed back on it, I rephrase the question, and I say, okay, when a parent puts a student in Lemesa's ISD school, do they expect that student to get a good education? Do they want accountability, they want some assurance that they're gonna get a good education? And I never have a board argue with me on that one, okay? What they will argue with me is, is that we may not want this accountability system, okay? Yes, the parents want some accountability, they wanna be assured that they're getting a good education, they may not agree with this, okay? And I'm not gonna argue that with anybody, so, one way or the other. But when we go through that is, is, so the first thing that we're gonna look at, and how the accountability system is put together, you have the TEES. So those stands for the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, alright? So in every grade or every class, whether it's geometry, or whether it's kindergarten, there is, there's a set of TEES that a teacher is supposed to teach. And those were agreed upon, actually they were put together by mostly teachers. So they put teachers and administrators, but mostly teachers in a room, and said, okay, when a kid leaves this grade level, what should they know? And they get to consensus on those, and then we make that statewide. Okay, at that, there's nothing wrong with this, they do a pretty good job with this. The only thing, history's tough, because the history teachers tend to never agree what part of history they're gonna let go, so they just keep putting more and more into the, than what we can teach in any, in any of the history classes in a year. And so, they don't do a great job inside of history, but outside of that, they're pretty good, pretty manageable. The STAR test then, is supposed to be designed to measure what percent of mastery of those TEES does a student have. Because that's where we start arguing whether it's really right or not. But that's what it's designed to do, what percent of mastery does that student have of those essential knowledge and skills that they should know? And then the accountability system, the A through F, just tells you how the school's doing on that. Now, as educators, we argued that we didn't want an A through F rating, and they said, well, nobody knows what exemplary means, or met standard, or recognized, nobody knows what that means, everybody knows what an A, B, C, and D are. Alright, and when I get through with this tonight, I'm gonna argue that the general public has no idea what that really means. Alright, because it's as hard now, and it's harder now than it ever was, it's more complicated than it ever was, and so I guess in the sense that, if you've never taken calculus as a parent, and your student takes calculus, and he gets an A, you know he's doing well in the class. You may not understand what's inside the class, but you know he's doing well in the class. Well, that's probably where we're at with here. If you get an A, the public's gonna know you're doing well, they're not gonna understand what's really being taught. I mean, they're just not gonna understand what's involved, okay? But as a board member, they want you to have a basic understanding of how this works. So, this is a third grade TEAK. First of all, when I was in third grade, then nobody ever used the word algebraic reasoning with me, if they did, I didn't remember it. I think we did a lot of multiplication and division in third grade, if I remember right. But this particular example says, alright, so you've gotta represent one and two-step problems involving addition and subtraction of whole numbers to a thousand. Alright, so then we tell the student to, hey, write us a two-step equation involving numbers to a thousand. And the student writes it down and gives it to us, okay? That would be an example of what the TEAK is, alright, that could actually be a homework problem. Here's how it's gonna be tested, and hopefully we're testing them in a way that it's gonna be tested, but, so this was an actual STAR question, and it's probably five or six years old now, so I'm sure they're way harder than this now, but that, this is what it was five years ago. And our teacher threw, had 736 crayons, she threw away 197 broken crayons, then she bought 150 more, which equation shows how to find the number of crayons the art teacher has now? Okay, so that's a higher-order thinking skill. Alright, I can do the math to all four of these equations, it doesn't give me the answer. Alright, and the first thing, when I'm reading the thing, when I'm reading the passage, for a third grader, the vocabulary in that passage is a little, is a little tough. So it goes back to, if I don't read well, I'm still not gonna get it right, and I'm in a math test. But if I don't read, I'm not gonna do well in math tests. So, it's a higher-order thinking skill, this is mastery of that, of that, of that TEAK. So they're gonna spend a whole lot of time explaining to you all the, all the different things that they do to develop questions, alright, and that they're trying to develop tough, strong questions. So you've got this assessment design, you've got all these advisory groups, you've got STAR redesigned advisory focus groups, you've got standard setting meetings, they get educators to read passage review, so they, each potential question for the, for the Reading Language Arts Test is reviewed, approved by a committee of teachers. You get each individual question that goes through that as well, and then you get constructed response finding. Educators are convenient to set the scoring boundaries for student essays on a rubric, because now we're gonna have to write, and we're gonna see that in a minute, we have to write it every, every, every Reading Language Arts Test. So they've got all these models that go through there, how we get from the assessment all the way to get to passage before it actually shows up on the test, okay? Probably is gonna have to actually be field-tested a couple, a couple of times before it actually gets on the test that counts. And so that's the way it goes there. So they're telling you it takes two years from assessment design to the scoring and reporting before it can actually be planned to count as a test question in the real test. Alright, so they're spending a lot of time and money on that. When a student takes a test, we get master's grade level meets grade level, approaches grade level, or did not meet grade level, alright, those are the four things that we get. So when your student comes home with that, you're gonna see that. So the first one, question up here says that if they get master's grade level on a, on a STAR end-of-course test, that that gives you a 75% chance of being successful at post-secondary without remediation. And one of these slides in here is gonna show you that scoring college-ready, showing master's grade level here is the same thing as showing college-ready on an ACT or an SAT. They've got enough data to fit you correlated, that scoring masters there is the same thing as scoring college-ready on one of those ACTs or SATs. So, scoring college-ready on an ACT is probably a 23 or 24 on an ACT. I don't know what the scores on Lemesa are, but when I was at Sands, I didn't get 70% of my, or 80% of my students to score 23 or 24 on an ACT. So these are smart kids, right? They're sharp, the sharpest of the sharp. My question to you then is, if, okay, these kids are that smart, why is that only 75%? What do you think? If I take the brightest of kids and they go to college, why aren't only 75% of them gonna be successful without help? It does, but it doesn't, because I get focused on, so the very, go back, going back to that, we said, if you, if you're gonna, if you have adult behavior change, you have all the knowledge and skills in the world, but where's the other part, right? It's mindset. So those kids are, they get there, their mindset's not on doing well in class. Alright, I'm gonna give you an example, so my best friend in high school, I graduated from Caprock High School in Emerald, but my best friend in high school was a year older than me, and he graduated, and I wasn't, first of all, I wasn't, I had like an 89.5 average or 6 average, I kept trying to get him to round up so I could be a national under-society, and they said no. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not the brightest of the bright students, but I'm not the worst of the worst either, right? So, you know, I'm pretty decent. But my friend was, he was probably third or fourth in the class, and that's probably just applied himself as much as he really probably should have. But he was student council president, he, if, whatever it was, he could do it, alright? And so I always called, he had the it factor, and he was gonna make a ton of money in life because that's what he wanted to do, and that's what would happen, because he just was successful in everything he touched. And, he went to tech, and he came home the first year on academic probation. Best thing in the world ever happened to me scared me to death, right? Because I'm like, he is smarter than me, I know he's smarter than me. And I'm gonna go to school, and if he can't make it, what's gonna happen to me? So, I come home at the end of my first semester, and I got a 3.6, he came home and kicked out of school. And I sit down, I said, Tony, I don't understand, I know you're smarter than me, and tech might be a little bit harder than Abilene Christian, but it's not that much harder, what's the deal? And he said, well, you have to go to class. I said, what do you mean you have to go to class? And he said, and he wasn't a partyer, well, probably his fault's parties, he wasn't a big drinker, whatever, so, he said, he was the most responsible person I knew in high school. And at the high school level, they took the UIO Computer Science Competition, he got second in the state at the 5A level in the computer science. He took a basic-level computer science class that he could've aced the final, the first day of class, and when it came time for the final, he could play co-ed softball, or he could take the final, and he played co-ed softball. And I just didn't understand. What I didn't understand in high school was how much control mom and dad had above, so that he didn't do crazy a lot of things like that, right? So they had, they had, they had the thumb on him. And as his friend, I didn't understand that. Now, just so you don't think he's a bum, because he's not. He had to sit out the next, this next spring semester, right? And said, mom and dad says, look, we're done paying, you're on your own. So he went and got a job at a bank as a teller, made enough money to put himself through WT and actually graduate on time, and then got a job at a marketing corporation, and within about 10 years became vice president of that marketing corporation, and then another one came after him, and he went to a bigger one, and now he owns his own company, and he'll make more money than I would've dreamed of, because he always had the it factor, right? He just wasn't being focused for a little bit. Right, but there are other things that happen here too also, you might, you might have, you know, some people are gonna have a full college paid for, other people are gonna have to work 40 hours a week, and they're not being successful. Alright, there's just lots of things that happen to us in life, and being disciplined, or being mature enough at the time to handle it. So sometimes, even though they're smart, they're not mature, and now you're faced with having to make mature decisions. Alright, so that happens. This also happens to me at third grade, alright? So this thing says if I'm at, if I get master's grade level at third grade, that gives me a 75% chance of being successful at fourth grade without remediation. It just looks different to me from third grade to fourth grade. What might throw me off, but the difference between third grade and fourth grade is, I might have a relative that, or somebody that's extremely close to me in his eyes. Mom and dad might get a divorce, dad might lose his job, and we don't know where money's coming, we don't know if we're gonna get to eat. There's all kinds of things that happen to us in a grade level that could cause us to not be successful, that's why the number's 75%. Okay, but we have to be aware of those things and try to catch them, so that when they're in third grade, we catch it and fix it. Meets grade level means you got a 60% chance of post-secondary success without remediation. Approaches grade level, we get points for this in Domain 1, but, but we're not on grade level, we're not quite there, we're gonna need some remediation the next year. And then does not meet grade level, they're not likely to succeed without, without major help, ongoing sustained help. And the longer we get into this, the higher, the older they get with this level, the bigger chance we have of them dropping out, or then just not being successful period. So, it's harder and harder.
And don't you think it beats either way?
It does.
Like if I'm successful, it's gonna feed me in fourth or fifth grade, because I know I'm successful, but once I'm not successful one time, I start thinking, well, I ain't gonna be successful next year, and it just...
Yeah, it can be a self-fulfilling process. So the STAR is a summative assessment, it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be made to know where we're at at the end of the year, we're not supposed to take it 15 times throughout the year to know where we're at, right? I can't take the, end-of-course final on the first week of school and do well on it, alright? So that's not what it's designed for, it's designed to be that end-of-year test. So here's all the different types of tests that you have, diagnostic tests, so those are tests that we're just gonna get and see, we're gonna get and see, heck, how much did you forget over the summer? Or what did you know before you started the class, you know, some, some kids may be exposed to certain things that other kids aren't gonna be exposed to, and so they're gonna have a bigger knowledge starting the class, so those are diagnostic tests. Formative tests, those are ongoing, measuring the progress, relativity, in reality, a good teacher's gonna be measuring those at the end of their class period, getting an idea of, hey, did they catch what we were learning today, where are they at with their comprehension, that'd be more time, those are formative type tests. You got interim tests that we take throughout the year that says, okay, we taught this many subjects, where are we at on that many subjects, and are we on track to get to the, to the end? And then we get to the summative test, which would be a STAR test, really an ACT would be a STAR test, be a summative test as well. Alright, so STAR was redesigned, and this, these slides were really created to, to tell you what was coming, it's already here and done, so now my, now my slide's gonna be here to tell you what's on the test, or what's different on the test. So, in 2019, we got a little rule that said that you can only have 75% of the questions be multiple choice. Alright, and we had to transition to 100% online testing, and, and this bill right here put in stuff for us to try to get through assessment year pilot, it wouldn't just be one task, but I haven't heard much about that later, lately, they did have some pilots going on. So, what, and I think this is the commissioner trying to spin back what is trying to spin the test, but, what we say here is, this is what effective classroom teachers do, alright, they just do it. If you ask me, is teaching a science or an art, I'd say yes. Alright, because there are some people that are just naturally gifted, and they don't go through a ton of formal training, but if they sit down and teach you a subject, they're just phenomenal at teaching a subject, right? That's art. Alright, there's other of us that don't have that, and so we spent years studying and trying to get better and better, and so from the science of studying what's effective, we get better. Alright, and so, so you have some teachers that are there because they're very scientific and studied how to be effective, and you have others that just naturally do it. But regardless of how they are, effective classrooms do these things, effective teachers do those things, okay? They're gonna coherently build students' background in knowledge and vocabulary in all subject areas. They're gonna ask students to write about what they read using evidence from the text. When I, when I taught calculus, sometimes I would just have them read a section, and then teach me how to do one piece of that. Alright, and see how much they can learn just from reading the section and teach me, because when you have to teach it, you learn it better. I was a, I was a much better calculus student after I taught calculus for a year than I was when I started teaching calculus, alright? You just have to learn it at a completely different level, you get a better understanding of it. Provide various open-ended formats for students to respond, supporting learning needs of all students. And so what they're gonna say then is, what he's gonna spin this is, is that by doing that to the test, it's gonna actually make instruction better. Because we heard this a whole lot, that, well, I'm tired of teaching to the test. Well, guess what, if we make the test good, and the results of the test a good, a good test, then you have to have good instruction to get to those results. That's what he's gonna say. And so, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time teaching how to do multiple choice questions, I'm gonna spend more time trying to get them to develop how to write paragraphs and how to put those thoughts out. And so, it makes me, I can say that one point in time, I get a little angered, because I think our teachers weren't quite, like, you know, they worked to the bone, but, but they have to have some way to spin it. So, it's gonna have, this year, all Reading Language Arts Tests had a writing component to it, so they either had to write essays, or they had to write short answers. So, and it had 100% online testing. So now I've got third graders in a lab typing, they're writing whatever they're writing. Which, to me, I don't, I still don't know how that works, I told you guys I'm a middle elementary person, I know the younger age is better at digital literacy than I am, but I can't imagine a third grader trying to type out a coherent sequence, because now if you're trying to type all those letters, do you lose track of what you've actually written? And so, we've been practicing that most of the year, so hopefully it's gonna, it's gonna do better, but I'm just telling you, statewide, the tests are probably gonna be tough, the scores are gonna be worse. They've kinda been preparing us for that. They added non-multiple-choice questions that are more like questions asked in class, so it may be, you know, open-ended type deal, what are the... it, open ended type deal. What, what are the, you, you read this passage up here, what are the three, um, what are three advantages of whatever? Uh, uh, that the passage was advocating? What, what are those three? Or what are three of those that you see to be, to be advantageous? They're gonna open it, ask open ended questions. The one thing that I do like right here is that uh, they were supposed to move the test to reading of a cross-curricular type passages of things that they studied during the year. Because we, we got a lot of, um, what we would say economically biased questions. A lot of people would say that test really, all, all, all that test ever really did was tell you if you're economically disadvantaged or not. That's, that's, we would hear that. But by, by reading things that, that they've studied during the year, instead of some random subject passage, they have a much better chance to actually have knowledge and insight into what they're, what the passages that they're reading and then help them write. So if they tell me to write about something, about a cone to Alaska and I've never been to Alaska, I'm not gonna understand that as much as a student that actually had been to Alaska, right? He's gonna have that experience. And so by, by taking from passages of things that we studied during the year, it's gonna give those students that don't have those experiences a better shot. So I do, I do agree with that. So they massively expanded the educator outreach to ensure that STAR redesign. Um, that just talks about all the different student, uh, teacher groups and different groups that they got to help rewrite the STAR test. Um, so then they get into this, this, this deal about, um, while individual questions can be easier or harder in a given year, the mix of questions is gonna be about the same. And, and this is somebody way smarter than me, even though I do like math. As, as to how to figure that out. So if you've got a more difficult item and a less difficult item and you've got these different shades, you know, the, the size of the circles represents how hard the question is, then we can, we can look at how many of those questions are on the test and know that even though we're asking completely different questions, the tests are similar, similarly in difficulty. Okay, and so that's because they've been field tested enough to have a chance at that. Um, and so, so they try to do that. However, even with all that being said, with as many changes as they made to the STAR test this year, we're expecting those scores to go down, even if the test was the same difficulty, just because of the, the, the number of changes. Alright, um, so they get back in there. If you don't measure it, you don't, you don't know, uh, you don't know what to improve. And that, that goes in not just education, but in everything, your health, um, your business, fitness. So the A through F is, is, is where we get back into this one. So domain one is student achievement. Alright, we're gonna look at that. Well, first of all, let me explain this to you. So when you get your final score, I'll say this once, I'll probably say it five times, so maybe it'll sink in. You're gonna have a score in domain one, you're gonna get two scores in domain two, and then you get a score in domain three. We're gonna take the best of all three of these scores in domain one and two, and that's gonna count 70% of our final grade. Okay, and then domain three, whatever grade we get there is gonna be 30% of our grade. Okay, now we're gonna focus in on domain one first and, and domain one is just focused on student achievement. So, um, don't, if you're in elementary school, that's the only thing, the STAR test, 100%. So in, in years past, it's been easier for a high school to score than it has been for a middle school and elementary school. And this is the reason why, because in domain one, the, their score is based 100% on the STAR test. That's it. In domain, uh, in, in high school and at the district level, we've got 40% on the STAR score. We got 40% on college career and military ready, and then our graduation rates counted 20%. So if we could get a graduation rate of 11, 96 or 97%, that helps our score, right? Cause that's 20% of our grade. And so that, the high schools grades are a little bit artificially inflated. Uh, and, and what you saw across the, the districts that had singular high schools, whatever the high school grade was, that's what the district grade was. Alright, because the district was measured the same way as the high school and these guys didn't have any of that, th- those things to bring any of these other numbers down. So, um, so now that, that's all changed. Well, the, the, the campus grades are not gonna change. They're gonna be done the same way. Although they're gonna make the high school much more difficult to score. Uh, and we'll, we'll see that here in just a second. So in domain two, um, that's gonna be on growth. Alright, and so on, domain two is on growth. So in the old way, if I got, um, if I got approaches in third grade and then the next year, is that, no. If I got approaches in third grade and then I got to meets, I got a, a full point. Okay, if I got from approaches to almost meets, T E A would go through this long complicated formula and tell you, I got a four years growth, uh, growth. So I actually got a point. If I stayed flat, so like if this line came straight across from approaches to approaches, but it was, the line was flat instead of incline. Um, they would say, well, you got a half year, you got a half a point. Because fourth grade's harder than third grade, so you did learn some, but you didn't get a full year's worth of growth. So they would say you got a half a point. And anytime I went from, from my meets to approaches, approach to does not meet, I didn't get any points. So then they took the, to get the grade there, it was just simple. You took the total number of, of tests divided by the people, or the number of people that got points divided by the total number of tests and you got a grade. Alright, and so that, that was one graded domain two. Remember when you get two? The second way was then to, they, they, they got this chart over here. And so, um, they're gonna measure you like others, by other schools that look like you. And when I say look like you, have the same economically disadvantaged percentage as you. Okay, um, and so the further you are on this line, the more economically disadvantaged your campus or district was. And, and the, the further back on this line, the, the, the less economically disadvantaged you are. So right here, if you look at, at this, at this campus right here, or let me take this one right here. Um, so right here, this camp, well, we'll use that one right there. So that campus right there got a C. Alright, well, if I come back across, this campus pretty much scored the same thing as that campus, but they're gonna get probably an F. And the reason for that is, and that's all based on, on your academic, your academic scores, right? Meets, masters, whatever. But what they're gonna say is, is that this score, this, this school is out, is, they're doing lots more with students that didn't, didn't have as much. And so they, so they're gonna compare you to those schools. And this school over here that's not as economically disadvantaged, they're comparing them to schools that look like them. And they're at the bottom of the barrel, so they get an F, whereas this school over here was in, right in the middle of the pack, so they get a C. Okay, that's, that part of it's gonna stay the same. This part's gonna change a little bit. So in domain one, there was no changes except for we updated the C C M R. So in, in, in the old year, you had to get, you had to have 60% of your students graduate college, career and military ready to get an A. And 23, 24, they gotta have 88% to get an A. So they jumped to 28% to get an A in one year. So that's gonna make it harder for, for high schools to score. And there, there's some other things that they did in that to make this harder too. We'll see in a minute. The, and, and domain two, that first table I showed you is gonna, instead of being one chart, it's gonna go to a table. Um, and then part two of that stayed the same. Um, and then part three and, and, um, so then, so this is the way that worked. I showed you the approaches, they stayed flat and you only get a half point, right? Get a little bit of an incline, you got a point, drop you and get any. Now what they're gonna do is, is they're gonna go to this chart. And so we're gonna look at, so this particular student right here in third grade, he got a zero. He, he, he didn't meet grade level. Alright, if in fourth grade, then he went from low, did not meet grade level to high, did not meet grade level, they're gonna get a whole point. So they're gonna take that did not meet grade level and they're gonna split it into a high and a low. They're gonna take the approaches, they're gonna split it in two. So right here, they took this did not meet and they drew a line, right? So I got two of them. Right here in approaches, they drew a line, so I got two of them. So now in third grade, if I was a, if I was high, did not meet, and I got high, did not meet, I still get a half a point. Alright, if, if I was high, did not meet and I went to low, did not meet, I don't get any points. Okay, but if I get, um, if, if I went from high, did not meet to low approaches, I get a point. Okay, and so that's the way that works. And then right after they had this all set, that's the way it's gonna be, they came back in and added a deal and said, okay, um, you can get, um, so if, if you look at that one chart, you put those scores in there, that's the way it was gonna be. Then they came back in, they said, okay, well, if we jump two, two categories over, we get an extra point two five. So if, if we look at that same chart, if we go back and look at that chart, you had 40 kids that were, were low, did not meet, that got to high, did not meet. Alright, that's just gonna be one point. But then I got 10 kids that went from low, did not meet to, to low approaches. And I'm gonna get a 1.25 points for that. And I'll get 1.25 for those and 1.25 for them as well. Alright, now this doesn't happen very often. I don't hardly ever get somebody to go from low, did not meet to masters grade level. Right in a year. That just doesn't happen very often. But in this particular example, they had two. So the way that worked then is, is, and, and the first one I had a total of, when I added all my points up, I got 435 points. I had 554 possible points. So I got a, um, it comes out to like a 79. Um, but now they went, now what they're gonna do is, I've got the same 435, but I had 75 kids that got me more than a point. And now I got an additional 18.75 points from them. So I take the 453 divided by the 554 and I would get a, I would get a, an 82. Too hot. Um, and if I only take a break, when you stop to take a break? You gotta, you gotta do that. Shut your legs, get some water. We got about 30, 45 minutes left. So we can get y'all through. Um, I told you this was tedious. I didn't mind. So, um, so in this one, uh, you're looking at that, that score, that, that didn't change. So you, whatever red dot is, they're gonna compare you to other schools that look like you. And then if you're performing better than those schools, you'll get a higher grade. If you're performing worse than those schools, you'll get a lower grade. Um, so the, one of the things that they did here then on that C C M R, in, in the old way, this is how we figured out a, a, a letter grade for a campus. So we took, um, the, you had, in this particular case, you had 3212 tests, okay? And you had 2977 that, that actually got approaches or better. So they were least approaches or better. And so they got, um, if, if you said, and then, so if you do that division, 2977 divided by the total, you come up to 93%. Alright, and then a, a meets grade level are better. So all 1945 are in that 29 number, that 2977. So if you do the math real quick, you can see that there was 1,032 students that, that got, um, that got approaches. Alright, and there was 1,945 that were meet, meets or better. Okay, but the same thing that 878s in all three of those numbers. So the more you can get to masters, that it helps you in all three of those calculations. So the more you can get, get there, the better you're gonna be. But they're gonna take that 1945 divided by 3212, that comes out to 61. And they come out, the 878 divided by the 3212 and that comes out to 27. You got all three of those together and divide by three, and that comes up to a 60. And a 60 was about what you had to have is to get an A as a campus. So whatever combination of approaches, meets or masters added together, you had to get that, those, those three added up together and divided by three to get to a 60 to get an A. Okay, that, that, that's, that's basically what you had to do. So then they did this, this Ross score conversion. So a C reflects basic average performance. So this is right now, they can't tell us what we have to get to get a C. But you know, sometimes those tests are harder or are, are not as hard. They can, they can, they can change this during, every year, right? Cause they can say, alright, in this year, to, to be in a, 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 a 78 on, on a scale score of a test, you had to get 47 questions right. Well, if, if everybody does worse on test next year, you might only have to get 37 questions right to get a C. Cause everybody did worse. And so they'll, they'll, they'll change that throughout the year after every test, but then it scales to, to a score here. Um, and so that, that's how that works. Um, it's not, it's not, but your scores aren't based on a distribution curve. So in, in a, in a distribution curve, there would be a certain number of schools that had to get an F. And if, if you can get the rec score, you can have all the schools get an A. Whereas if they're grading, um, on, on, on a fixed distribution, we know a certain number of schools are gonna fail, regardless that they're all doing well. Bottom five are gonna fail. So that, we're not on that one. Um, we're already into that, so we're not gonna whisp that. We're already past that, so we're not gonna mess with that. Um, okay, so college career and, and military outcome bonuses. Those are, are something that you can earn. This actually earns money for the district. Um, so in a C C M R, um, so how, how do you, how do you graduate college ready? Okay, that, that would be the question. So to, to graduate college ready, I have to, um, meet the T S I in reading and math. Or get nine hours in dual credit classes. Or get a three on an A P or an eight, an I B exam. And then they put, or get an associate's degree, you know, just like, if I've earned an associate's degree, the chances of me not having more than nine hours in, in, in dual credit are probably slim to none, but, um, they put it in there. And then they also put on this, uh, auto ramps course. We don't have very many districts in our region doing that, but what happens there is, is you have to take, um, you send your teacher at the high school, they go to the University of Texas and, uh, they study a little hard all summer long. And then they come back and they teach a class and the student enrolls in their class and then takes an online class at U T. And if you pass both of those, then you get, um, then you're considered to be college ready. Alright, uh, career ready. So how do I graduate career ready? I have to graduate with a, uh, earn an industry-based certification. Uh, and, um, or graduate, if I'm, if I'm a special ed student, then I graduate with a completed I U P and workforce ready. And, and, or I can get a level one or level two certificate, although they're making that much more difficult now. Because in order to, starting next year, I, I, I can't just get a level one or level two certificate. I have to get the certificate and have one completer class that leads to that certificate. So whereas I could have put somebody in a, in a computer lab and let them get Microsoft certification. Now they have to have a class that, that, that leads to that Microsoft certification. And I have to have one. Starting two years from now, I have to have two. So that's gonna be much harder to, to get, to get these career readies. Uh, and so if your district's been primarily career ready versus college ready, to score inside the accountability system, then we're gonna have to, um, then we're gonna have to be ready for that and we're gonna have to make some adjustments. Um, so then how do I, how do I earn a, um, an outcome bonus? Um, I have to graduate either college or career ready, one of those two. Then if I'm, um, if I'm graduating college ready, then I also have to be enrolled in school um, by the drop date of the fall semester after I graduate. So they're gonna get all those scores. So we don't find out how many kids that we actually get money for. I think it was probably late February, early March this year. Uh, so it's not money we budget. But this get, this can, this right here can earn us money. And I'll show you how in just a minute. If I'm gonna be, um, and, and then, um, if I'm gonna be, if I'm gonna graduate career ready, I have to pass the T S I so I have the ability in reading and math, so that I have the ability to go to college and earn a certificate. So if I've done both of those, then I get, then I count for the, the career bonus and, um, uh, outcome bonus. And military ready, um, the only way you can be graduating military ready is actually enlist. Um, and so what they were gonna do was when, when they very first put this in, they were going to, um, they were gonna get the enlistment numbers from the D, the D O D. And then they were gonna award it based off of that. And the D O D said, we're not telling you what our enlistment numbers are. We're not giving you any access to that. We don't really want third world countries knowing how many people we have enlisted. So, um, they took it completely out for a while and now they're putting it back in. And so if you can actually get the enlistment letter, you can then load it back up through P E M S. And you'll get credit for that student as being military ready. Alright, so how do I get the, so how do I get the outcome bonus then? So you know what you have to do to get the outcome bonus? So how does it work? So they're gonna say 11% of all the students in Texas that are economically disadvantaged graduate, in this particular case, um, co- uh, college career military, alright? And so, um, and if I, all the, 24% of the non-academically disadvantaged students graduate college career military. And, um, if you get any of the special ed students, you're gonna get that bonus, cause they're, they're not doing that one. So what they're gonna do then is, is they're gonna sub- So what they're gonna do then is, is they're gonna subtract out the 11%. So let's say you had 25 economically disadvantaged graduates in your, in your class, alright? Then 10 of them met the requirement outcome bonus. Okay, so 10 of those 25 met the outcome bonus. Then they're gonna take the 11% threshold to your 25 graduates, and they're gonna say, well, that's basically three graduates. So then they're gonna take the 10 minus the 3, and then they're gonna give you $5,000 for those seven students. So you, the district will get 35,000 extra dollars in the funding formula that they're not, they're not formula driven. That would come to your district. And like I said, we don't budget that money, because it's really hard to know what we're gonna get. And we don't really, because we have to find out, did they, did they stay enrolled? Because they tell us they're gonna go to college, but did they really go and did they stay? Or did they, so it's just really hard to get all the information to budget that data. So we wait till we see if we get it, and if we got it, then we, then we use it for a project that we got going, or we save it and use it for something special next year.
Do you have a know of schools that own for those numbers to get that money, or?
Well, so that was what happened with the military ready the first year. They decided they were gonna let people self-report. And what happened was, is, is, in order to be military ready, you have to pass the ASAB test and enlist, right? To be eligible for the outcome bonus. Well, there were a bunch of schools that didn't read and, and reported that they had a huge percentage of their kids military ready. And most of those kids didn't enlist. And so when those numbers came in, 90% of their school was military ready, they went and said, no, 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 no. Well, then those districts actually got a monitor assigned to them. So you don't wanna, it's really hard to, so I took that away from the schools to be able to self-report it then. And the only way you can self-report it now is if you actually have the actual copy of the enrollment letter. So they would be able to pull that up, that enlistment letter, so they would be able to pull it up.
So it's the school's responsibility to keep up with that, and that's just extra money?
On the military level, it would go up through PMS, all the rest of it would go up. So like on a college ready, there's PMS codes that are gonna say they qualified for this, this, and this part. And then TEA is getting the self-security numbers from the, from the universities. And then they're cross-referencing them. And so they know how many of your kids actually were in school on the drop date. And so then, then they come back and give you that. So they come back and tell you, you know, get to report that.
Because we could code them as ready.
Yeah.
They go, and then like, that kid's friend gets sent home and then they don't.
As many as you can register.
But they still gotta stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They don't stay, they still don't come.
Yeah, just getting enrolled and doing things. You have to show up and be in class. If you're not, if you're not, if you're not on the roll after the drop date, then, because they're gonna drop, anybody that doesn't show up, they're gonna drop off the roll by the drop date. And then on the drop date, they'll have certified those rosters, and then they'll send them to TEA, and they cross-reference them and let you know. So the university, so TEA is actually doing the work there now, not us. And then on the career military ready, I mean, on the career ready, you're gonna have reported that up through PMS. So you're gonna have show they either got the Level 1 or 2 certificate in, or the industry-based certification, and you're gonna have TSI scores to show that they did that. And that would all go up through PMS. And then last, so domain three is the hardest piece of that. It's the hardest piece of all of this. We'll just get into it. So this is the way they used to do it. There's 14 different groups that they, that PMS books at, alright? And so you could have all 14 of those, or you could only have three or four of those. In the, in, up until this year, we've only, we've had to have 25 students in any one of those categories to count. Okay? But TEA's changed that for this year to 10. So if I have 10 students in any one of those categories, that category counts now. Which is also gonna have, we expect to have significant impacts on districts. I mean, the data's not in yet, so we'll see, but we expect that to cause some issues. So what they did here was, is, is, they, they went through this. So academic achievement, you had, if you had five of these groups, just to make the math easy, if you had five of these groups, then you were gonna have a total of 10 targets over here. So all five of those targets in reading, all five of those targets in math. So that was a total of 10 in the denominator. And then we looked to see how many of them got that. In this domain over here, approaches does not count, it's meets or better. If they, if they got approaches, they're zero points, they don't help you anywhere towards the target. And that, that's staying the same. We did the same thing for graduation rates and CCMR. And then the last part of that is the TELPOS test. So the TELPOS test, anytime a student enrolls in your district, they're given a letter that's sent home that says, is English the primary language that's being spoken at your household? If the answer to that is no, then they count in this, in this. So then they'll have to take the TELPOS test every year. And then we're measuring the percent of students that measure proficient divided by the number that took the test. They're changing that going forward massive this year. So it was already complicated, now there's just absolutely no way for us to really keep up with this. So what they're gonna do then is, is, they took the 14, the 14 groups, and they said, okay, now, instead of having 25 students, you only gotta, you only gotta have 10. And then we're gonna take the ECODIS, the emergent bilingual, the special ed, the high mobility groups, those are all gonna be called a super group right here, this high focus group. So all of those categories are gonna go into one. And then they're gonna take a look at these categories right here, and they're gonna look last year and see which two groups of those performed the worst. And then they're gonna measure you on how they did this year, on those two groups, how they did the worst last year, how'd they do this year. Because this is all about closing the gaps. So they wanna see if there's improvement there. And then, and then they'll, they'll look at the all students group the same way, they'll look at special education the same way, and the continuous enrolled the same way. So, now this is what, because we're in July now, all the tests have been taken, and I still don't know how this is gonna be completely figured. So I do know this, in the all students category, I can get somewhere between a zero and a four. That's gonna be based on how did, how much did my students improve from last year to this year in the all students category. What I don't know is, is how much do I have to improve to get a four versus a zero? I mean, obviously, if I didn't improve at all, I'm gonna get a zero, right? But if I improved 5%, am I gonna get a one, or is that gonna be a two? If I improved 10%, is that a three, is that a four? I don't know. They haven't released those standards. I think TA sent out a letter yesterday that said that all of these standards will be released sometime in September. So it'll all come out of an accountability handbook, and we'll see it in September. But until then, I don't have, I don't know what I have to do to get that score. But they're gonna do that for, for the all students group. They're gonna do that for the two groups that you did the worst in last year. They're gonna do that for that super group, and then, and then they'll do that, I guess just those two. So they won't do that, those two. And then you'll, you'll get zero to four and all those, all those things for academic, reading and math. So I'll get a zero for four in reading, a zero for four in math. Then graduation, we'll look at your high school. So we'll look at graduation rates. Did that grow in, at that point? And we'll look at each of those groups. And then we'll look at the, the star only, so this is the CCMR for K-12. So we'll look at those groups, how they did on college career military. And so then you'll get those. And, and then, last but not least, we'll do the TELPOS test, and we'll see if that percentage improved. And so then they'll figure all those out, they'll give them a weight, and you'll get, you'll get a number, and that number will be 30% of your total grade. Unfortunately, I just can't, I can't tell you. And that frustrates me as an educator, to not know how it's gonna be scored. We're gonna take the test, and then you write the rules. And so that's basically what it is, we play the game and then you write the rules. And so, oh, well, you didn't do this, because that's, that's a violation of the rules, so you lose. But we just don't know how that's gonna work. So I stay frustrated with that a little bit. So we go back to what I said before. You get one grade in domain one, which is just the star score, or the combination of the star score, college career military ready, and graduation rates, right? And then two is based on relatively performance, we get two grades here. One on did our, did each student grow? And then one on how did our district do compared to other districts that look like us? I take the best of those three grades, and that becomes 70% of my grade. And then I take the, the closing the gap grade, closing the gap grade, and that's 30% of my, of my score. Now, this is the, so this is not gonna, and David and I were talking about this. You guys have, and Lamisa have one campus, so you're a K-12 school. Even though you have five campuses spread out. Five or four? I said it wrong, sorry, four campuses. So if you, but had you not gone to that one campus score, or one campus number, then they would change the way your district score was. So the way your district score would be scored then is, they would figure out what percentage of that campus is of your total population. So in this particular case, we'd say that elementary had 13.8% of the total theme. And then they would come in and say, okay, well, their total score was an 85, so it's 13% of that, of that 85 counts. And they would do that for each campus and add them up. And that's the way they're gonna do the district scores. So the district scores are most likely not going to, across statewide, match the high school anymore. Because they're gonna be a weighted average. Now, because you're a K-12, you're still gonna be figured in the same way. So they're gonna look at the score, this score, they're gonna look at that score as a, as a district. And then the domain two score, and the closing the gap score, and they'll figure, like I said, so in this one, you got those three grades. In this example, they would take the 81, because it was the best of the three. And they would multiply that times 70%. And then the closing the gaps would be 30%, so you, you would get a total score of an 80. That's how, that's how the district score would be figured. And that probably will still maintain a pretty close score to the way your high school does, because in domain two, well, you only have, in domain one, you only have star scores. And in domain two, you're gonna have, I'm getting confused. In domain one, at the elementaries, you're only gonna have star scores, the middle school. The high school's gonna have college career military and, and and that graduation rate, which is going to then make that, give the chance for that score to be a little higher. So, and so where this is an advantage, David and I were talking about this as an advantage or disadvantage. And in years past, it's been an advantage to be one, one campus. I don't know that that's gonna be the case anymore, because it's gonna be harder for the high school to score, because they set the, that college career military ready up to 88. So where, almost all of our schools were getting an A in that college career and military ready, because we were getting at least 60% of them there. Well, now that 88, you're gonna see that not happen. And so that's gonna come down a little bit. And then also in the, well, your graduation rates would be the same. So we'll just see whether that is or not. What it does do, there are some cases, so like if you had a K through three campus, you only have one campus that's tested, right? So third grade then is the only students that count on that campus. And so if third grade has a bad year, the school, that, that campus has a bad year. Alright, well, the way that you're one campus, if third grade has a bad year, you still got 4 through 12 to save. So you have a way to mask an individual grade a little bit more than what some campuses would have. So it's hitting this as to whether it's gonna be better or not.
And you said, we were one of the last schools, whenever we did, we were the last school.
You were the last school your size that had multiple campuses like that to be able to do that.
Do you think, once this really gets ironed out, that a lot of those schools our size that did it? I mean, can you see, because once you go back, you can't ever flip it.
Yeah.
Or you think the graduation rate's gonna be enough to make us desire to stay?
Well, so, I mean, there's good and bad with both of this, and there's pros and cons on all sides of that. So one side is the accountability side, which in years past has been a huge advantage. Not gonna be as much of an advantage if it's an advantage at all anymore. You still only have to write one district plan, instead of, instead of having to write four individual campus plans and a district plan. So there are a lot of things administratively that have to be done, that because you're one campus, you only have to do one instead of five. But there are some disadvantages. So some of those disadvantages are, you're gonna have to put an armed guard at every campus. Right now, you only have one campus, so you're gonna have to put, they're gonna give you $15,000 to put an armed guard at every campus, but you have four campuses, and you're only gonna get $15,000, because you only have one campus code. But you're gonna have to have an armed guard in all those places. So there's advantages and disadvantages all over, and I don't know, until we see a couple of years, how that's gonna work.
I don't think you're gonna make a rash decision.
No, you're not gonna wanna jump at that, because it has implications all across. And some of the, you know, there are a lot of grants that you might not even be eligible for now, that you would be eligible for if your elementars were separated.
When we had that discussion, and what are we planning to do?
Well, it's like, like he was saying, if you go, if you go the other way and it's the wrong call, you don't ever go back.
Yeah, because they won't.
Because we, he said, we were either the last or one of the last. And after we did the cutoff, they didn't let anybody else do it.
Y'all, y'all did it, it was the last time in that, that Ross campus, that year.
With it still being so in the air, I, I don't think we should make a decision this year. I think we should wait and see how it plays out.
I might even say a year or two before you decide. I mean, if it were me, I probably would sit back and wait a year or two until I had good data to see how bad is this helping me or hurting me, before I make a decision. Because there's just too many, too many factors in there right now to be able to guess. And they're all over the board, some of them are financial, some of them are accountability reading wise, some of them are, you know, it's not, you can't just look at this one thing and say, well, we gotta do it because of this. You gotta look at the whole picture. And I don't think you can, I don't think in a short period of time, you can gather that often, know what the right answer for that is. I mean, Dr. Worgo says this all the time in our place, everybody wants to, everybody always wants to do the right thing. Figuring out what the right thing is the hard part. And this is one of those where there's not an easy answer to this, it'll take some time to study. Okay, so we're almost done. We're to the two groups now, so we're gonna get to those last two. And we're not gonna spend as much time as this as I normally do. So you've got 20% of the, of the students in the state of Texas that are emergent bilingual students. And I, I still have a hard time with that, with that term, emergent bilingual. When I started education, they were LEAP students, Limited English Proficient students, and then they became English limited, or Limited English, English Limited students, or English Limited, I don't know, English Limited Learners, and then they were just English, I don't know. They've changed the name 10 times. It's the same student group. It's all the same group that takes, when you take that, that survey, that letter home that says it's the primary language, and you say, no, they're in that group, and it's the same group of students, no matter what you call it. The, the federal standards still call these, this group English learners, so they're just EAL students on the federal side. But the state of Texas has moved to the emergent bilingual students, and they want us to call emergent bilingual. But if we're on the federal side, we have to be looking at EAL. So it makes it more confusing for me. And I still sometimes revert back and say LEAP, because that's the way I learned. So hopefully I didn't say it wrong tonight. The students in special education is 11%, so 11% of our states is that. You've got some other ones in there, get to the Talons, 8% of the state, and we have 7% of the students in 504. We're gonna look at those two. So the big thing here is, is, you know, we saw that in some of those things. I changed one word and it made a huge difference, right? So there's a big difference in lightning and lightning block, right? Makes a big difference in how you're doing that. So we gotta think, we gotta make sure that we got the right thing. So some of this is gonna get politically correct, and I'm not trying to be politically correct for one way or the other. I actually have strong beliefs in, in some piece of this, and I'll, I'll move to that side of it. But they're gonna say people in special populations are first and foremost people, okay? And so rather than saying special ed students, like I've said all my life, they want you to use first-person language and say students in special education. Because we're gonna say they're a person first, and then they have whatever, whatever it is afterwards. Okay? I don't know that this matters as much, but this is the way they want. And then they're gonna put a disclaimer up there that says, not everybody that's in one of those categories would believe what they're saying is right. But it's the way they want us in the state of Texas to start, to start speaking when we get to that. So the right way would be seeing students receiving a special education, instead of saying sped students or special education students. You can see how they're going through this all the time. They get to a point where I think some of it's borderline, not, you know... They get to a point where I think some of it's borderline, not, you know, the blind person, are they really gonna care if I say they're blind or if they're a student that has a visual impairment? I'm not sure. I do know that when we get to this one, you know, we don't use this term anymore. All right, and so, if you're standing out on the fence line or sitting in the stands at a football game, this is kinda what they want you to think about. If you're sitting there and you're having a conversation and one of these terms comes up, and you use it with the person first, language first, you're lots, you're less likely to upset a parent that might have a student that way, if you use the first person. And so, they just want you to think about it. I'm not saying you have to do it, not saying you should do it, just saying, if you think about that, then we're gonna get through that. So, I do say this one though, so think back when you were in high school, or in school. What did special education look like? What did it look like when you were in school? What did special education look like?
With me, it was still resource class, self-contained, portable building.
If you asked me, I'd say I wouldn't know, because we didn't see them. Yeah, they're separated. So, they would either pull them out, and they'd be gone for one class, but if they, if they had much disability at all, then we didn't see them except for maybe a PE class, so I wouldn't have any idea what it looked like. We just, we didn't see them, that's the point. So, now, today, if you look at it, almost eighty percent of them, of those students are gonna be in a, in a regular classroom, right? So, we're gonna have inclusion. And so, it changes things. And this is where I get, I get into this one a little bit. They've got this video that talks about, you know, is inclusion really being included? She asks a tough question. So, it talks about, and before my time in school, they had institutions, and if you were at least a little bit specialized, you went to the institution, not to the regular school, right? And then we brought them to the same building, but we still kept them separated. And then we just shoved them all into the same classroom. And, but, what she asks is, if you're just sitting in the classroom, but you're not able to have the lesson modified, or to be able to take meaningful discussion into the learning, are you really being included? It's just sitting in the classroom physically enough. And I don't know the answer to that. I don't have good answers for any of this, I'm telling you that on the front side. If I did, I'd be rich and not be here. I'd have written a book and somebody else would be presenting, right? But, but, but I don't have good answers for this, okay? I do know, this is gonna bring up some tough, some tough, tough things. So, that eleven percent of students in special education, six hundred and five thousand students statewide, you've got a whole lot of federal and state requirements. You've got, you've got least restrictive environment. We have, and that's why we get a whole lot of these students inside a general classroom. What's the least restrictive environment? We have to do that. We have to, to the maximum of ten appropriate, educate in the least restrictive environment. These are the four different settings that you can have if you're a special education student. So, I can be mainstream, where I'm spending most of my day in a regular class. A resource room, if they're coded that, that means they're in the general classroom for less than fifty percent of the day. All right, if I am in a self-contained class, that means that I'm providing services in a self-contained program for fifty percent or more of the regular day. And my fundings are gonna be weighted differently, in the funding formulas, based on how they're categorized. And then we have homebound, and that's not very many people, not very many students. But, so you get eighty percent of the students that are receiving special education students that are in the, in the general classroom. This is where it gets tough. Only one in five of my teachers feel prepared to teach that. All right, I didn't get any specialized training. I wouldn't know how to modify my lesson when I got sent in high school back in nineteen ninety-two, how to change that for my math students. I wouldn't have a clue. Well, even though we're educating teachers a little differently, most of them still don't come out, if they didn't specialize in that, specialize in that, they don't know how to do that. They don't feel prepared to do that. And so, that's tough. Students with disabilities fell behind in reading and math, eighty-five percent compared to their peers. All right, so that's a tough question. Because I taught calculus, and I used to say, "I'll, I believe all students can learn." I didn't think or believe that all students necessarily would learn calculus, right? Some of that's because they didn't want to, some of those are because they didn't have the ability to, all right? Why is that number so high? And what I meant to say early in the night, and I forgot, was when my, that first graduating class of mine graduated, I was worried about that test. I told you I was a high B, borderline A student, right? But I was worried about that test, because nobody had taken it, nobody had seen it, nobody knew what was on it. And I didn't like to write. I liked math, and I didn't like writing, and I was a horrible speller. So, I was afraid, so I'll text my friend. But I, I was afraid of that test. So, I took the test, and I went home, mom said, "Well, how was the test?" I said, "Mom, if you couldn't..." I said, "This is a high school senior, and I regret saying it sometimes, but..." I said, "Mom, if you couldn't pass that test, you shouldn't graduate." I said it to her. I didn't think it was a hard test. It wasn't a mastery test, it was a minimal skills test. That question that you saw in the third grade that we set up there, that might have been on my exit level test. And it might not even have been that hard. But we had certain groups inside the state of Texas fail that test at seventy percent. So, as a high school student taking that test, I don't know what I didn't know. If somebody failed that test, and it's happened to me twice now, two different schools, and board members actually failed that test the same year I passed it, and so I put my foot in my mouth. It's not, that's not necessarily an indication of them, it's an indication of where our school system was at the time, and what we lacked, all right? So, now, when I get to this and I see this stat, is that because my expectations aren't high enough? Or is that because they're really not able to perform? And I don't have an answer for you on that one. I really don't. You've got, this goes back to those federal requirements with FAP, and you have to have child find. So, you've got to be out actively searching for kids from birth all the way to twenty-one, and then identify them, locate them, evaluate them, and determine whether they need, they need services. Here's the thirteen different eligible acronyms. I really need to ask my PMS. They've moved dyslexia under the special ed category now. So, I don't know if dyslexia goes in as visual impairment, or if it has its own category inside PMS. I need to ask. But right now, you've got thirteen and possibly fourteen. Okay, so any of those conditions are gonna have you classified as special ed. We talk about an IEO, who'll level the playing field, so we talk about equality, all right? I treated all three of those students equal, I gave all three of them a box. Okay, they all got the same box, I treated them all equal. If I'm gonna treat them with equity, he doesn't need one, that one needed two, and I gotta build a whole ramp for the third one. Now, when I was building a gym at Sands, I didn't like the third one, because it cost me tons more money. But if you've ever had to be in that situation, it makes a huge difference. And so, it, it's about having opportunity. And this is, this is the other thing that I don't know, and when I get back into this, is what I'm saying is hard. You're gonna look at the stats there about how they do compared to their other students in each of the grades. You can see the stats on how they do with graduation rates. They're not, they're not gonna graduate as high, at a higher rate as our other peers. But there's the other side of that coin. You get some kid that's emotionally disturbed, and, and we have to put him in the least restrictive environment. So, we have to put him in the general classroom. So, what happens when I have to enter that classroom now two or three times a month till we can get that student back under control? How much instruction do those other seventeen, eighteen, nineteen students miss? Because we're having to deal with one. There's not easy answers for this. And so, that's what I, that's what I want you to know on that one. And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, talk about emergent bilingual for just a second, and then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna wrap it all up. So, emergent bilingual, we talked about that, and I've gotten through all that. So, this was a video, we're not playing it tonight, but if you play the video, you see the student who doesn't speak English, he speaks Spanish. They put him in a, probably a fifth grade classroom, and they've given him all of these accommodations, right? So, they gave him a bilingual dictionary, they gave him a lady, a girl that said for a signing that speaks Spanish that can help him go back and forth, that translates some. They gave him math manipulatives, which he has no idea how to use. And, and so, all of those are things that are accommodations that we would give a student if they're in an emergent bilingual program. They've given all of them to him. So, the teacher's in there, and she's writing away, she's talking a thousand miles a minute, like I've been all night long, and, and she puts a word problem up on the board that says, "So-and-so ran so many blocks within this many minutes. How long would it take if they ran this many blocks? How many minutes would it take if they ran this many blocks?" So, as she's talking, they're putting all, they're transcribing all the words up, and they're putting in orange the words that he actually understands from the sentences. And so, he sees blocks, and he doesn't really know, so he looks up in his bilingual dictionary and sees a block, and it tells him that it's a box of some kind. And so, he turns to his, his partner that speaks Spanish and says, "Why would he run with blocks?" And she said, "No, city blocks," okay? So, then he understands. So, he starts doodling around on the deal, because math is math. You don't have to, the language is, if you can, once you get to the math part, the language is irrelevant, right? So, he starts doodling around, and he comes up with the right answer. So, she's asking the class, "Anybody got the answer?" And the kid behind him sees that he's got an answer down, so he raises his hand and says what the kid wrote. And she goes, "That's great, how did you get that?" And then that kid's like, "Oh, I'm in trouble, because he didn't have a clue," right? So, he goes, "Oh, I forgot." And so, it costs laughs at him, she gets on the class, it's a typical day inside, inside an elementary school. And so, as she's walking over there to get control of him, she sees that the student wrote it out right. So, she asks him, "What's the answer?" So, he tells her the answer, and she says, "How do you get it?" "Well, he can't explain it in English." And so, he's lost. I mean, he's frustrated. And so, after the class, he goes up and he says, "Can I get the test in Spanish?" And she tells him, "Don't worry about the test, you just got here, the principal told you this test isn't gonna count, and the test is not important." And he says to her, "Yes, it is." And it is important. And when I, I saw this at Abilene High when I was doing my student teaching. I got to teach all of this gentleman's math classes except for one. And he went to the, he went to the counselor at the beginning of the semester, and he used languages that I can't, words that I can't say, but he basically said, "I want every kid that just got across the river, and I want them in my class." And, and, and they, so they had probably twenty-five or thirty students that were just spoke Spanish, how they were pretty new to the, new to Texas. And, and he put them in his class, and he was teaching fundamentals and mathematics. And he taught the lessons in Spanish, but everything that they answered, he made them answer back in English. And so, he had that doorway piece going on. "Oh, I could do that, so I just got to sit and watch." At the end of the year, he got over half of that class Algebra One credit, because he could do that. Now, that's a gym, they should have paid him as much money as it would take to keep him, right? But we can't, we can't find teachers, much less teachers that can do that. So, this is hard. And as unprepared as the special education teachers are, when you put a student inside that classroom and they don't understand the language, it creates the same frustration level for the teacher, because they want that kid to be successful. They just do. And they're gonna fight everything they can to make them successful, but it's hard, all right? So, here's all the different models that you can, that we can use across the state about. Thirty-six percent of the state, most of them use this early, this CSL pull-out model. It's the least effective, but that's what we do, because that's what we have, okay? There's only one school in the state, in our region, that has this type model, and that's a little bit, because they have enough students to actually qualify for that, all right? And so, you have to have over a certain number of students in a grade level to even matter. And so, they use this transitional early exit, I believe. But, but it's hard, okay? These are all the rules that you have to have. And these are, we've already talked about the test there, so if we're gonna, we've got the TECs, and we test them on the STAR, and then we master, get Master of Curriculum, right? Of grade level curriculum. And when they become emergent bilingual, we test them with the ELPS. And then, we have the ELPS, which are the standards that we're supposed to teach them with, just like the TECs. And then we test them on the TELA class to determine progress. So, that's something that you need to be aware of when you're doing this. So, now we get back down into this, and it's like, what's the board's role? Because I could give you more stories of that kinda stuff, but in reality, we've been here a while. What's the board role when it comes to all of this? What do you think the board's role is?
To oversee, to make sure our administrators are...
Right. So, when we get to that, when we do progress reports, whether we're measuring them a couple of times a year, or whether we're just doing it at the end of the year, as a board member, you need to know, what groups do we have inside the least? How many of these groups are we actually looking at, okay? So, if you had twenty-five in that grade level, you were supposed to have progress goals for those, for that group, all right? So, the question is, the board then is, what the board's role in that is, is when this information gets presented, you need to, you need to ask the question, "What groups do we have?" They need to follow up with the question of, "Are we on track?" And if the answer is no, why not? Or what's the plan? Okay, it's not the board member's role to go figure out how to teach that emergent bilingual student, all right? It's the board's role to say, "Hey, are we, are those emergent bilingual students on track? And if not, what's the plan to get them there?" Okay, the plans may look way different. When I was at Sands, if TA knew what I was doing, they probably would have rolled over, they probably would have had a heart attack. Because we started getting a whole lot of men like kids that spoke German. And we knew at the time, it's better now, but at the time, their parents weren't gonna let them, they weren't gonna let the boys go past fifth grade. At sixth grade, they were gonna be on track. And we could get some of the girls through eighth grade, but then they were, they were gonna be gone. So, we knew we weren't gonna get them all the way through graduation anyway. So, we felt like it was honorable to get them to speak English and learn English as much as they could, and educate them as fast, as fast as we could. But we would have students that would come in to us that would be a third or fourth grader and hadn't had any instruction in English ever. And for six weeks, we might put them down in first grade. Because that's where we were teaching the fundamentals of what they needed. Now, I could get away that in Sands, because I probably had twelve or thirteen kids in that class, so I can monitor that a little better. But when a parent walked in and saw this fourth grader sitting with their first grader, I'm not gonna tell you that sometimes we can get a little bit of, "Hey, what's going on here?" Right, but we could explain that, and we could monitor it, and we could control it. Lubbock High School could never do that, all right? But Lubbock High School has a whole list of things that they could do that I could never do, all right? So, your administration has to come up and figure out what they can do, all right? And so, they're gonna come to you with different things, "Hey, this is what, we're gonna try to get on track." What I need for you, the board, to understand is, when we get into these groups, there is nothing easy. And our teachers, when I watched all these videos and put all that together, you're asking a teacher to get a lesson plan together, maybe multiple subjects, and then modify it for special ed, and then modify it for emergent bilingual, and then reteach all three of those, and in a limited amount of time. And then we wonder why we have teacher shortage. Because almost, when you look at the scope of what they really have to do, you almost have to be a superhuman, almost a superhero, to be able to do that and be good at it. And when they're not successful, they get burned out and they get discouraged. So, it's hard. When I put all of it together, it really, when I watched the two videos together, and the impact, and all the rules, and all the requirements, all that stuff, just preparing for the training, I sat back and was like, because it's been a while since I've been in the classroom. I sat back and I was like, "Oh, wow, that, it was tough then, and it's tougher now, because the rules are harder." And now they changed the STAR test on me, and now we're gonna get a grade based on that, that maybe not as good. And they're telling people to expect most, most districts to drop a grade, a letter grade. So, so then how do you go to explain to your, to your community? Because we go back to that very beginning, you gotta advocate for what's best for the district. How do you explain to your community, when you drop a letter grade, but these teachers are working insane amount of hours and time trying to be successful? Because they want the kids to be successful. They're not happy if they're not. And so, they'll die trying. And so, with that, then it comes back to the board role in that thing, is to ask the questions, "Hey, what groups are we at?" Just like you with the budget. When you're looking at the budget, are we on track? If not, what's the plan? It doesn't matter if it's budget, it doesn't matter if it's academics, it doesn't matter if it's the other. You're overseeing the management, so you're asking the questions. You're sitting up there like Jerry Jones and saying, "Hey, good job." Or you're sitting back and receiving all the reports and then asking a few questions, "Hey, are we on track to where we wanted to get?" If not, what's the plan? But most importantly, before all of that, you set the vision and goals so we know where we wanna be, all right? And so that's what the board's job is. Uh, that's, that's the board's responsibility. And I don't envy your position because you you don't get paid, I give you, I double all your salary and it's still gonna help you. You 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 just don't get, you don't get paid enough for that. Um, and it's a tough job, but I thank you for the time that you put into it. And so with that, that's everything that I had tonight. Um, quick cut, um, oops, sorry. I jumped. I forgot, I got, there's a talk and I forgot to get the evaluation.
Will we get that slideshow or can we get that slideshow?
I can, uh, actually. Uh, it's very difficult to, um, if you go in and delete the two slides that have the video.
That slide's big.
If you, if you delete the inclusion, that that lady with inclusion where it has, if you delete that slide and then delete the one that has the student picture on the bottom, then that, those videos are massive. And so if you ever delete those two, then I think you could send it out. Thank you for coming out. You're welcome. So I should have already hit this corner on that one, but there's a.